Excuse me, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Luther School meeting on November 4th, 2021, and the emergency meeting on November 9th, 2021, as written or with corrections.
The move second.
Move to the second in discussion. We now have all the votes. As a favor, we pass the committee's. Superintendent report.
I sent mine out in advance. I don't have any additions and it's plenty to talk about tonight. So I will wait for the areas. Do have something I'm excited to report, but I can't until next time because it hasn't happened at the school level. So I'm sorry, I'll have to wait.
Teaser.
A teaser. And the only other thing I wanted to just say is I know this has been a really, really huge challenge over this beginning of the year. It feels like it's ramping up more and more over the last few weeks. But one thing I'm not meeting lots of thank yous, so I wish you all happy Thanksgiving. Wish everybody out in the audience a happy Thanksgiving. As hard as it might be, I really would encourage people to take some time to be reflective and think about there's really so much to be thankful for. And kind of set aside whatever your frustrations are and take time to enjoy your family, your friends. Enjoy the holidays. And so unless you have questions about my report, it finishes, there are no appointments tonight. We will be bringing the whole list of coaches next meeting. And so we have three resignations, Michael Puglia, the high school specialist tech three, Jacob Lucin, a grade school specialist tech three, and Dennis Goye, a middle school math teacher, no retirement, no transfers.
Thank you. Good luck to all of those who are moving on. Thank you for your service. So for our school committee chair report, I have two things. I'll start with a reminder. The second meeting in December, the superintendent will give us an interim progress report, or actually we'll go over it at the second meeting. In executive session, we'll talk about benefits, extension of contract, all those things as well as where it matters. So Jim, would you be able to have that progress report to us by the first meeting?
Trying, working on it. I will be honest with you. I'm not surprised. I'm not trying to make excuses, but it's been, I'm looking at the goals and the lack of progress in any of those. And I try not to look at this as discouraging, but I think you all, I hope you all understand how to work things right. So I will, I will.
Don't give us a chance to revisit them. Okay, so that's one thing. And then also I sent you all an email just to give you time to deliberate on this. That our new school committee member Catherine has a conflict every Wednesday. She is in a HD program. Her classes are Wednesdays from five to noon. So in order for her to actually serve on the committee, we would have to move the date. So we have to, we don't necessarily have to make that decision tonight, but I thought we might just want to take a couple of minutes because we would probably have to vote at the next meeting. So any initial thoughts?
The only day I can move it to is a Tuesday. Every other night is a pocket. I don't vote that for myself or other families.
Okay, that's good to know. Anybody else?
I cannot.
You cannot?
Actually, I picked up an air. Some of the other people can't, I think.
Yeah.
See.
Okay. Any thoughts for you to think?
Yeah. Maybe I have. Your parents love watching you.
They do.
Can I just add, I was thinking about. The Wednesdays, the school looks kind of edged in stone, longer than I have served.
I wondered that.
Okay, so I can remember that when we were back, pretty sure in the seventies, we started teaching. Mondays was typically always the town council. Wednesday was the school. Obviously, there's a reason for that. It's so that if we all again, they're meeting again, they won't care about it. But I know for sure that when I was participating in some discussions like that in the nineties and then in the decade of the two thousands, what they joined here.
Are you just gonna say the late nineteen hundreds?
I was gonna say nineteen hundreds. It's been that long. But then I was just thinking, I said, you know, I don't know if it's in the child or not.
It is not.
I didn't think it was either, but I just said, it's a traditional label. And this is not default. This is a element of that. That was one of the things that I've mentioned to other people who have contacted me on Wednesday. So I feel terrible getting into the situation. It's happened, I don't know if it's really happened this way, but other people have chose to, you know, been elected and they quit serve for whatever reason, maybe it doesn't happen. It's not the end of things. It's just that I don't think that. I just saw this going on. I'm not in favor of moving.
All right. Do you know how, like, is it, is it from January to night? Or is this like a year round?
She's not, she doesn't know beyond this year. Like, she's in a cohort.
Okay.
She's in a cohort, so it's not, it's not like she's done today.
Yeah.
She doesn't know. I mean, it could potentially be now in time. And she couldn't be here tonight, but like any other college, what she, what she could make would be in January, when she would take over. She would be able to probably make that first meeting. The process wouldn't have started then. So let's say, okay? And then I don't think she would start by the twenty. So that's what makes. I don't know if Sue shared this, but I mean, this came, we did the orientation the other night. I think it really orientation. So this stuff, I said we would take a look at it. I. I, our fear, she's, she's very aware of this.
Yeah.
It has been a long history for being on Wednesdays. I kind of looked at that. Yeah. So.
I think it says the person, yeah, maybe do that every year or something else. Change their schedule on a Thursday and Tuesday. I mean, it could get a little.
Well, has anybody checked to see what the room availability would be?
Yeah, it's fine.
It's fine.
Hope we do.
If she can serve. Would we have to vote again?
No, no, no. The, the, yeah, we had a write-in. Town council would have to vote that person. And the way the appointees work on this, my work for, for Catherine is they can only appoint for the next election. So theoretically speaking, if they appointed somebody that was on board for a year, and then next January, they would be, well, next November, they need a new election, so they would go to that results. And I don't know that exactly. The process for filling is they would look at, they would look at, they would name somebody. In the instance, they would make names, but it's already expressed in the press and probably the guidance folks.
Are you sure we can't?
I'm not sure of that. There's, I've learned a lot being part of a single municipality, but I'm.
I don't know if it's in the town charter or.
I would check that out. I would definitely check that out.
We had other appointments. It was made by a school even when I was on.
Yeah, that seems odd, but that's.
But at his point about we'll be serving to the next election.
If that was the case, then Catherine could make a change in the next two years.
I don't know. Yes. So I think, so I think the conversation tonight was really about exploring whether or not we could change Wednesdays to Friday. It sounds to me like at least for a while. Thank God Janet hasn't said, I don't care.
She doesn't. I already wrote that down.
Might have to hurt. But, you know, that seems like, I mean, I know it could work with you. It seems like the rest of the three are probably not a good idea. So it seems to me that probably we should share with us.
Yeah.
I guess the good thing about the way we do things here in terms of taking over is we can resolve, we can take care of this before the person actually takes over. Change. Other places, they are, then they take over the next meeting. Or that as soon as this one, the meeting after this one, she has gone through the process means we don't do the orientation for swearing and the mental rotation. So I'm here.
That's all I have for my chair report. So we will move on to community reports. Findings?
Nothing new.
You told me you were all caught up. That's what I wrote down.
We were, but I forgot that I reported that at the last meeting. Because I just checked my warrants that I had here. They matched the numbers. Yeah. So I had nothing.
Okay, for policy, excuse me, we met tonight at five. And we had something we're in the middle of discussing. We had a student, an eighth grader student, actually asked us to look at cell phone use policy for eighth graders. So she came and made a presentation and we did her homework to go back and do a bit of research. And in fact, her comeback to our next meeting. Yeah, she, she did an amazing job. She stood right up with everything, all of her ducks around. It was really great. It was the first time that I'd ever experienced that. So it was, it was a neat experience for me.
What was her, her argument? Pro or, or against?
She was, she was asking for the privilege to keep, for eighth graders to be able to keep their cell phones on their person.
Are the high schoolers allowed to?
Yes. At the middle school, the expectation is that they would be in their pocket.
That makes sense.
No.
So that's what she was asking. She had some good arguments. And we just asked her to maybe go review some teachers.
That's awesome.
So we also were, I've been talking with Kristen Schumler about the sports booster policy. That we're, they're really doing an amazing job reorganizing all that and making it really consistent. So we're taking our time with that and working with them. And they want to do what wants to do it right. So we don't have anything even forward for the next meeting yet.
I think one of the things we could probably just share with you guys, but one of the things that Kristen was talking about was maybe working with high school administration and Joel and the other co-president of the boosters to, and I think our position was really like, they're very involved in this. So we want to, we, they felt like it was consistent at one point in the past and that it's kind of lost focus or direction. And we just really want it to be as consistent as possible. Sue brought up the notion of, I'm surprised we haven't heard about this from our audit. It's kind of all, all over the place. We need some pretty clear guidelines. So I think people who use it the most should give us the most feedback. So that's where we want.
Yeah, they have some. They're just, they're on top of it. And other than that, we're also, we're talking about the dress code policy. Again, we're not quite ready to bring that forward. So negotiations. We were sent the sports staff contract to start reviewing, to get ready for negotiation on that. And that's where we are right now.
We sent them. We sent them. They sent us. And I think what I said last meeting is, that is the appropriate one. So I, I don't think that probably we should, maybe even tonight, if we want to pick a date for us to get together. But we may need a little bit of time to review that and cover the list of things that we want to bring to the table. And then, as we said, we said share last meeting, maybe, I think our goal is to have an organizational meeting before Christmas.
I'm gonna skip for you because we did not be here tonight. The eighth graders reports. They were in your packets. Any questions, comments, anything like that?
Yes, my comment is just that these were really well thought out. Reports are very informative. It's nice to read them.
Yes, they, they really do a good job of letting you know what's going on, don't they? I just wanted to make a quick comment about food drive. Is that new or is that something that they've always done?
Well, that's a really great question. I don't know what they, what they've done in the past.
Yeah.
But I know that this year there's greater participation in student council than there ever has been. And so, yeah, hoping that just puts a new.
I don't, I don't remember there being a food drive when I was in the room, but it also was a long time ago.
That's a relative.
A lot happens in four years.
I just thought that was a really good idea. And I'm glad there was some really strong participation. We went out.
Do you know how, how many kids got vaccinated that day?
Yes. Eighty-five.
Eight that came in by the grade school, then second, eighth, sixth grader.
The ninety-three? Well, I think I sent you guys eighty-five.
We have like four hundred and ninety.
Are there, is there anybody else who signed up or?
Well, I know people that, I was aware of. So there's definitely one of the five at the grade school. Other plans pretty more. I know you have to do the second shot. Not at this time. I was just going. Go ahead, Jim.
My question is kind of a follow-up. Are we getting more of the young people to sign up for the pool testing?
Yeah. Yeah. I'll figure out a number for you. I'll look at my number. But we have, we have negative pools today. I guess we need our pool, so they came out negative finally. One was pending all day. So I'm like, oh, they're all negative this, the last two weeks. Wonderful.
There?
Not, not at the middle school. They're positive.
The middle schools, is it?
That was our first one. There was one Wednesday. They all ran a negative.
The word of God is that you were second. They're rapping tomorrow. They're negative. And it's, it's infirmity. You see, I, so you just.
So it's considered a positive at that point, after two rashes?
At the high school.
I still, Jake's now, I'm waiting for himself today, but so how are we even negative?
They don't know.
Well, she's making a reasonable guess.
So Tuesdays are middle school messages. If we have a few middle school messages, it's both first and what, I don't know. It's a healthy, healthy number. And a lot of the kids are vaccinated. We also have the second, I mean, that's the second one. Unfortunately, a lot of our children are able to get vaccinated today. A lot of the children that vaccinated this guy are in the summer.
So, so here I, here I ask this question. Because people want to know. So how many kids do we have out of quarantine? Got to watch out. It's kind of a game.
I did tell you when number actually the grade school, fifty-two.
Fifty-two or?
Yeah, five classroom impacted. We had six positives this week that all had contact recently.
But they weren't part of the pool.
Was it community spread also? Of course. I would, it's March of that. And there's, there's some, it's, it's too early to count right now.
How's that affect?
Oh, high school, I, I think high school right now, we have five, four kids running. And in the middle school, yeah, one's getting vaccinated. So we have probably six or seven out right now.
Yeah.
And the pool, and it would have been more, but because they weren't either vaccinated or pool testing, they were able to stay. Right now. I think at first we had fifteen, obviously. Yeah, but then it's only six or seven.
Obviously, the list is for people down because they get vaccinations.
Well, we hope.
I would say pool testing, though, it's confusing because if you have, if you're an adult, you don't remember, that's positive. And if you have a child testing, that's a community, that's a, that's community spread. So this, and it's very easy to get, you know, we're living this point where some of us are like, we got it. But for, if it's hard to grab your head around and say, well, how come that's campus? You know, during the pool, why a camp maybe has pool testing? Because it's not the child, because child's school community. When it's an adult, that's community. So that's, that's a kind of crossover. It's hard for people that, you know, because pool testing is new. We're all, everyone's learning. And yet, so you have to kind of take a step back. Sometimes it's, sometimes it's really clear what's community, what's school. Sometimes it's tricky. You have to kind of take a step back and kind of draw it down.
Yeah, definitely confusing, isn't it?
It's like your pool testing is good.
Thank you.
I think there's about twenty-two that are in quarantine at the grade school, I mean, pool testing, that have been in close contact. I think twenty-two that are coming to school, but quarantining outside of school hours.
Yeah, that's the other tricky part I think people forget is if they're, if they're pool tested and they're, they're in close contact, they're supposed to quarantine outside of school. They, they could be here, but they're supposed to not interact with you.
Or they shouldn't be going to daycare or karate or anywhere else. So there's a confusion. Like, they think it's a, um, I mean, it's great. Everything is surrounded in testing, but they still could get, you know, have hope in it. So it's really important to keep on, you know, systems and, and quarantining have both, that person.
We're supposed to.
Yes. But they are twenty-two because they'll protest. And they'll have to quarantine from school. And obviously, there's that that are vaccinated, worry for, for just getting into things like that. That's where they were.
At some level, it's really sad. I know I, I spent a fair amount of time in the grade school. And just walking around today, I was not leaving, I got winged. And, you know, there's a classroom down there that has two kids. Oh, there was four. That's right. There were three. They were not, one of the youngsters were somewhere else. And there's another classroom next door that has seven or eight. And that class is on, we appreciate this, Tim. They're on, we've been in school less than fifty days and they've had a number of those kids that have been out, probably towards the thirties, or in quarantine. But, you know, it's a. But I think what people keep missing, and I think it's so important, I'll keep driving this point home is while those numbers seem really hard to fathom, it's significantly less than where we had last year significantly.
Lisa, can you tell me again the population of students total at the grade school? Thank you.
Any other questions? Can you hear me? I don't think we're on. Can they hear me? Okay, thank you. All right. Moving on to all business, four point one, revisit the turn to school protocol.
Well, the next three items on the list are related to that. So I don't know. I mean, I can tell you, we, since last week, we had a pretty robust administrative meeting today. I've been around to all the buildings. I've got a lot of feedback, a lot of you have received feedback. So I don't know that we're, the things that we're possibly could be considering are coming up. So unless you've got questions, you think, like, we get on to that.
I just have one comment.
Yeah, and I have to actually.
We, um, we, I started a couple of people increasing subpay. My only concern with that, I mean, it's always people that are increasing. When you start getting the territory where sub makes more than staff number working that day, I think it's something careful.
So let me just say, what's been suggested or what I, what I've seen, I'm actually, I'm so glad you brought that up because that wasn't a number. Looking out of the way where else we would have brought that up. On a, like, we have a long-term sub right now, certified teacher. Certified teacher makes two hundred and thirteen dollars a day. Yeah, I believe that's correct. What? Beginning, yeah, absolutely. Our beginning teacher makes thirty-eight thousand. We just, we do it real quickly while I have. Well, yours has to be thirty-seven-five is the law, forty thousand a year, thirty-five a year. Thirty-five. Provided by a hundred and eighty days, two hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-nine cents is our premium. So, you know, I've heard all kinds of suggestions. For me, I don't believe that's what's getting in the way of people deciding to come or not. We put out a deal to one member of Rotary and as a result, we have three new members. I do think there's a legitimate case we made for, again, time, we're going to have a bunch of college kids that'll be back. And if they want to consider us, then we probably need to table it. We need to figure out twelve dollars an hour. We're above the, I thought it was over now. We went to ninety to get above the minimum wage threshold. There are, there are some schools nearby that have gone to as much as a hundred and fifty. I really recommend that we do that. But I, near, real nearest to us, Miranda, for instance, pays a hundred and ten. But I don't know, I'm not convinced that, what I don't want to do, this ultimately is always your choice. If we, it's going to be hard, I would have a hard time saying to people, oh, this year you're going to make a hundred and fifty, next year you're going to make ninety. You're going to make our, I think, whatever we, if you want to boost it, I'm all for that. But what if, let's boost it to a number that we can sustain for, you know, a period of time.
Is it based on an eight-hour day?
Seven.
Seven hours.
That's ninety-one right now, right?
Ninety.
Ninety.
But I had a problem with seven because in retrospect, want them to know a little bit, so that they can.
We don't, they don't honestly count hours.
I, I know. I could say eight hours to me is a more accurate figure.
I was, I did it on eight hours and it was at fifteen dollars an hour.
Which, again, common fathers will do that, but the best thing is they'll give you. Okay, I mean, I've gone around and talked to all these people. I said, you know, they say, I want to talk. I just think the competition is, it would be great to get some of these college students in there. Only to get some fresh in a place and get some things and stuff like that.
They have pretty fast, we, teachers too. So we, we got soon.
So this is something that some of you may not think about, but it's in my, my daily work all the time. If we increase the subpay and someone who's currently regularly subbing and on food stamps, Medicaid or Tana, that potentially could disqualify them from some of those services. So I just, that's something to keep in mind, right? Is at what point are we doing good thing or not great? I personally know, I mean, there are plenty of transitional services available, but would that be a reason why people would step down? If we increased it to a point where they would no longer qualify for that?
I mean, they could, they feel that way. They could just think what they become to themselves.
More depending upon the size of their family.
They know how much they can make.
Yeah.
Once in two weeks, often.
Yeah, it's just something to keep in mind, it's not.
So you guys, I, I can't remember how this works, um. Like I said, I, I just, my concern is from a budgetary standpoint, I don't want to increase it to a point, and I'd like to increase, I would like to increase it, I just don't want to increase it to a.
Well, yeah, I mean, twenty dollars an hour, the seven-hour pay is a hundred and forty. Plenty of.
It's easy to do, we want the hundred and forty for the rest of our, for the rest at some point, it will go up again.
Well, I mean, how many of our normal subs on a normal given day?
What's a normal, so let's ask Tim what he thinks of normal subs.
All right, let me try that again, so my mother sometimes substitutes, she does not have an educational background.
Right, right.
There are people who are licensed in whatever job they have that are making less than that per hour, so that, do we want to take that into consideration, or do we want to take into consideration? We need more subs, so we're going to up the pay to whatever it's going to be per hour, regardless of what licensed individuals who do skilled labor would be getting paid per hour.
That's a consideration, another consideration, and it's in what Tim was saying, uh, if we boosted it to a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, that is more than our, like, you suffer an hourly, right now it's ninety dollars, whether you're a tech or a teacher. A lot of places I've worked at, they sort of differentiate between something for an hourly employee, something for.
My district does.
Yeah, both of those, first place I've worked, it didn't, so I think, yeah, I'll try, you know, I, but.
Is there any reason we wouldn't make that be a tier thing?
Absolutely. That guy would strongly suggest it.
You could keep that, 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 I'd even up.
I would say we're gonna go up, we're gonna go up to, it would be a tech. I think it's sustainable, but I, I just want to say, this, the, um, for me, I want to make a decision that I think will be lasting, and, and financially, so we're not in horrible trouble right now with our sub. Fine, because we just can't get anybody to sub, so, yeah, nobody to pay, uh, so it's kind of okay, but in, hopefully in better times, we get more people, we need to make sure, you know, you just need to be aware, as a school, when you make that decision, it's probably the right decision to make, but it's gonna cost.
We normally run very tight with someone in, in normal years.
Yep, yep.
So.
I think we'd be fine, probably, we could make, we could make it work. Yeah, and, and, you know, maybe Joe can make the same argument, it may be possible, Tuesday, we haven't tried it, so, um, maybe boosting it is gonna make a difference.
I guess I can't. And so how much it costs extra? One twenty?
I don't have, I, I, no, I have, it's not, it's not an astronomical number, but it's, you know, I mean, ethically, we could use two or three subs in every single building, every single bank, sure, it's, that's, that up. It's, it's not gonna be a huge, huge number, but it's, it's good, just know this, it'll be more than we have in the budget, that's not, that's not a big problem for me, per se. Part of the issue budget, so. Well, I can do that.
Really? I was just, right now, at ninety a day, it equals roughly twelve eighty-five an hour, and the state minimum wage is twelve seventy-five. That seems a little pitiful for four.
I, I'd make, I'd make it most, just to sort out, make the motion to raise to a hundred, a ten-type position. One thirty.
So can I just suggest in terms of process, because it's not on the agenda, you can, um, what I'd like you to do is to tell me this is what you will support, and then we'll put it on the, we'll put it on December first as an official, so if you tell me, there's no objections, then we can, we can begin.
Instead of a tech, would it be, would it be an hourly?
Yeah.
Just to clarify that, because secretaries might be hourly, or.
Yeah, I think if we just said hourly instead of, we have a lot of hours. So, yeah, that would make, be fair to me. So I heard you say one thirty, put teachers in one hundred for an hour.
As long as the budget can, which I, I think it, it can, yeah, but, and I know that it's, it's always a issue with, I, I mean, it just, it is.
You will. That would be, and, and if you're gonna make this decision, I'd rather you make it now.
Yeah.
So for now, we're gonna fight it together for next year.
Going to affect long-term subpay.
No, so long-term subs, as I just said, we have.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that one, because, you know, sometimes, and I get that it's not necessarily a good thing, we just decided we lost.
So are long-term subs not included in that line, right?
Well, well, long-term subs get, um, they're after ten, they, well, if they're certified after ten days, they get, they get, yes, zero. They get that, yeah, to, 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 two thirty, or two fifteen, whatever, that's what it was, uh, and, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's the, where we might need more clarification, is we have a long-term sub that we're not certified, and it's probably gonna be somewhere, um, somewhere in the middle, we just have to. Sort of figure out what, you know, what that's gonna be, it probably be more than one thirty after ten days, but less than two thirty.
Yeah, I could support that.
Um, the only other thing that I wanted, I wanted to bring up under what my point is. A community member had written to us all, I think, and one of, she made some suggestions, and one of them was to have data available, number of cases, maybe numbers kind of like what Alyssa just did, and Jeannie just did. Yes, and I really liked that idea, and I was sitting on my couch thinking the same thing, and thought, she's reading my mind, so, um, is that something that would be possible?
So I would ask, um, I, I, it seems like such a simple thing to ask, the, but somebody's gonna have to put that together, I mean, I had to ask Alyssa and Jeannie for some numbers. It's, it's just one more thing, I mean, I'm not, I have to get the numbers from somewhere, or even if I ask Jolene and Martin and Sue to do it, they've got to get the numbers from somewhere, that's just one more thing to ask for my nurses, and I don't know, I just. I, I, I haven't quite been convinced why people need that information, I know they want to know, and I know they have a right, but I don't think people have any sense, and this is, this is, I feel badly saying this, this. It's, it's, this whole, you know, it's so exceptionally well-written, it's a really honest request, so I, I think we need to figure out, I'd like to take some time, work with the administrators, figure out, if we don't do it weekly, then we do it, whatever, and others, how the schools are doing.
I don't have to be more for the school committee, more than anything, because to me, that would help with some of our decisions.
Well, my point would be this, if we gave, if I got the information to send up to US, hopefully, I'll send it up to, I'm not opposed to sending it to public, but it really is a question of, um, that the numbers don't magically appear.
Oh, I know, that's why I asked them to put this process.
I, I don't know, I, I don't want to put them on the spot, so, I mean, I, I, I think I should, I feel like I should go back and, we should reexamine, and where we should examine much.
And there's only so much information we can give out, I mean.
Yeah, what, what was asked for, I think, is very reasonable, in terms of not looking, I mean, well, by grade level, by school, by grade level. Yeah, it gets a little tough, but.
I'm not sure, I would make the grade level, I, I, I'm looking for trends, like, what direction are we moving in, are we getting worse, are we getting better? You know, it's a pool testing, helping, those, those kinds of things.
Yeah. And, and you remember last time we had, we had a parent, um, again, I thought it was a really good suggestion, but it, it doesn't just automatically happen, about getting somebody to do some PR-type work, or press releases and stuff. But again, that information has to, we have to get that information somehow, and, um, it's kind of there, um. And, and we are, we are small communities, we don't schools, I've heard me mention this many times, my wife works in Auburn, Auburn used to do that on a weekly basis, some, some, I know some schools still do it, uh, but you know, on a weekly basis, Augusta does it on a weekly basis, no, okay. But we're small, and we don't have, um, you know, we don't have a true HR person, we don't have a true, um, publicity person, and those are all hats that I share with the entire administrative team, and then, whatever. Ultimately, in terms of this type of stuff, it's, it can become a little invasive, it can, it can become a little bit, uh, we have to be careful, well-protected, people's individual rights, it's a tough thing for me to respond to, but I don't think, it's, I don't think it's, uh, I think it's a really fair question for people to ask, and if you tell us, we have to do it. We'll do it.
Yeah.
My thing is that, I wanted this information, so I said, I wanted to get the committee, I want teachers to know, I want the community to know, some of it is, if they know that there's a problem which is sitting in a particular grade level, and they have a kid with that grade level, gives them greater awareness about, like, protect this kid, too. But the other thing is.
But that's happening, I just want you to know, that is happening already.
It's happening among the parents of that particular.
It's happening among the people who need to know.
Exactly, that's right, but I'm just, I'm just saying that there's some good news in this thing, too, and we heard some good news out here, though, we may have a problem here, but we don't have a problem all the way, okay? And we've got a nice thing happening with this, as people are getting more involved in pooling and everything, it's given us a greater ability to deal with it. I, I think in the end, it becomes possible now, as I expressed to super tenet, I don't assume when I talk about this, but we, we've got a confusion out there about these figures that are going out, which I think are community figures, like, there were nineteen people last week that just got COVID.
That's not school.
But people think it's school, okay?
Well, they have the same access to the department that the CDC may go with, you do.
I know, but if, if they're looking at the website, it's crystal clear on there.
But I'm just saying, it may be crystal clear out there, but I went back and I said, gotta say that this is the community, even in our own website, with the information that we have, so, anyway, I just, I'm just a big believer in transparency, not very. Get to be as specific as you can, let the information flow where it is, and I just think we will be.
Kelly, I have two separate things, the first is, if we do this, I would be very leery of breaking it down by individual grade level, because you're, you're on the cusp of, of releasing PHI-type information, protective health information at that point. Maybe if you're going to do that, you do it by kindergarten to pre-k to first grade, second, and third, and fourth, and fifth, instead of each individual grade, uh, because it's really easy to narrow it down, if you're only talking about one grade at a time, who might be involved. Um, the other thing is, so, kind of a, where do we go kind of question, so. Who is, is our webmaster an employee that works regularly every day with the school department?
Their employees.
Okay, and is that their full-time job, or do they do something else?
It's like, and does the middle school have one, the webmaster?
Okay, uh, who, so, the webmaster for the high school is also a webmaster for the central office, right? Okay, um, so. It seems to me like the nurses and the principals already somewhere have all of these numbers for their school somewhere, right? And they could potentially email that information once a week to those, those two webmasters, right?
Yeah.
To be put up in the, the website. My concern, though, is kind of what you were just talking about, how, you know, what information are you going to be providing? The number of kids who are on quarantine for close contact, the number of kids who tested positive, I mean, what do you, because if we can't. If, if the CDC stuff says, these are the number of people who came with a positive in Winthrop, right? But they're not all students, it wasn't all school spread, so where do you draw that line, and what do you say, you know, what kind of slayers do you put on that information?
I mean, what I was thinking about was very basic, so we could see basically what direction, yeah, it's, it's very difficult to hear things, at least for me, well, in general, it isn't. Literally, but, um, but also just from week to week, or meeting to meeting, it's hard for me to remember, okay, which direction we got, we, are there more people out, are there less people out? Things like that, that's more what I was thinking, yeah, so, and maybe it would be good for the community to hear just those basic things, so if the teachers are saying, look, this is what we're trying to deal with, they, they would have kind of a general idea. We have twice as many this month as last month, or, you know, just that basic, so people understand, well, what's going on, or just like a trend line, yeah, a trend line even, yeah, just something that shows. What is the line?
Let me take a look at it.
Because I can't remember.
Let me take a look at it with the administrators, yeah, because there is a fair amount of data that's already, we already have, uh, we have to report to the DOE, and, um. Maybe that's not, you know, I guess I'm gonna be totally honest, I, I'm a little, um, I'm a, not reluctant, I'm a little gun-shy at this point, because I, I don't know how, well, I'm concerned about how people use the data, uh, you know, and. So, I mean, I think we get to go with the data's out there, and we can put that out there, I'm not as, uh, I think we already provide our, our parents with a huge bulk of data, frustrates me, we'll never be successful, we could never communicate enough. Uh, but it's, it's, I see sometimes the way the data that we provide people is twisted, and, you know, used to, uh.
It's easy to tell any story you want.
I'm not even necessarily asking for, for the general public, I'm talking for, for our meetings and the decisions.
Yeah, well, no, I think we tried, I think we tried, but I, but I think as I, we read this email again, and it was, it was exceptionally well-written, very respectful, very appreciative of this tone of making suggestions and whatever, that, that's really, 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 really great. And, and this person is actually saying, it could just be listed on the website, that those of us interested could check in the same way, that have been said, go back to the jokes, that Mr. Ogden, that my friends keep track of the numbers in the town, I'll let you guys know that I, I, that's easy information, I'm already doing it, so I'm making, I'm giving it to you guys. I could certainly post it on the website, and you can access it those who want to, I guess that's what I'm gonna, I'm not, I don't want to add, sort of, reluctant for a couple of reasons, um, I don't want to add any more to my administrators' or my nurses' plate, um, and, so, if they look at the data that's here, they'll have to pick up.
But alternative be to just include the link to the CDC COVID-19 page, so that people can go and look at that out of themselves, because some people just don't know where to go and look for.
Yeah, I think I've done that, but we can, but maybe, so that's a great suggestion, well. There's a lot of stuff out there, and stuff like county, and stuff like.
I got Boston yesterday, I want to know what's going on in my district.
Yeah.
I, I, it took me a while to.
Yeah.
Find it.
But if we can, I mean, I don't have, I don't mind taking it on myself, uh, to go through and synthesize that data, and then, uh, put it out to get posted, and like I said, I don't mind putting stuff on me, um, I just, I don't want the stuff on other people at this point.
Okay, shall we, shall we move on to discussion regarding President Biden's COVID-19 plan, vaccination requirement for employees with one hundred employees, which one hundred one, please?
This is, there's really not a lot to this, um, maybe, let's hear a bunch of questions, uh, the guidelines, the, you know, now that that has been moved forward, um, the state hasn't, so. Sometime early next month, to sort of put it out there, and then, fourth, third?
Third or fourth.
Yeah, um, so, a couple of weeks to get the, the guidelines out to us, and then we're supposed to implement it on January fifth, fourth, January fourth. So a couple of weeks to get the, the guidelines out to us and then we're supposed to implement it on January fifth, fourth, January fourth. So the, the essence of it is this, for the employees. Employees have to make a decision, and we've already shared, someone around shared with the entire staff on their early release days. And I encourage them to get involved in pool testing, but they either, and, and our goal is to protect their anonymity. I don't want to know, I don't really, I mean, I do care, but I don't need to know who's vaccinated, who's not vaccinated, although the people are sending in their vaccinations, I have a pretty good idea. But people will either have to be vaccinated, or they'll have to be subject to testing on a weekly basis, which we're doing here at school. So if they don't join a pool testing, they're going to have to let us know that they're not vaccinated. We're not going to permit them to get their vaccine, their tests outside of the school. It's, it is a control thing, I guess for lack of a better, better deal, I don't want, we don't want to play games with that. We do the vaccination, we do the, the swap. And we know who's positive or not.
Kelly, shouldn't someone in an HR type position know who is and is vaccinated?
We, we do, but we, it, it really was voluntary, but I can tell you that I feel that, I feel like our, at one point, remember I, I reported to you guys what the numbers were. You know, we did a survey and, and people either were, and at that point, I think the numbers, I don't remember what the total numbers were. I thought they were pretty good, it's eighty something percent. Now the numbers of all of our schools are over ninety percent. And when people are being vaccinated, they send us copies up there. So, you know, that may be what the, when the guidelines come out, they may say you're gonna have to determine. For me, I just was trying to say, if you want to remain some, have some level of anonymity, you don't want to stand out, then, then join a pool. So when your pool votes to get tested, you vote, you test it with the pool. You don't. So, that's that.
That's your weekly test.
Yeah, that's your weekly test, it's not that it says you can't, you know.
But, but Laura says, or the president doesn't say that you, the employee, have to get tested weekly, and you, the employee, will pay for it. This is, this is, if you're not in the pool, you say you're not going to be in the pool, you're not vaccinated. They would be against, and they were not going and getting vaccination themselves and paying for it, they'd be in violation.
I would say that we, we talked about it, and again, I won't know the answer to that hundred percent.
To the final.
So that, so that those, the guideline, the guidance comes out. I, I, I think as an employer, we have the opportunity to say, we're going, we're requiring they do it here, and we require they do it here.
Just one minute.
Then we have, then we have, then we pay for it. Certainly don't want any business of charging people, which is whatever, that, that just, that's ridiculous. And, and I think it's a lot, lot more, and Alyssa and Jeannie here, if you want to ask them, but I think when we first talked about it and there was potential of twenty or more people that were not in pool, or, you know, were just not vaccinated, whatever. And maybe have to do it several, that felt a little daunting. I think now that we're talking, I mean, I think our numbers district-wide are probably ten. We're, we're over ninety percent of the entire, one of the schools over ninety-five percent. And so our numbers, we've been really good, so just trying to push people who are not vaccinated or not in the pool to, to get into a pool.
Do you have something to add, CJ?
I would just suggest that they, perhaps for our, that they, the easy thing they do in a pool is for us to, for me personally, Alyssa, to cater just on one role, I, I have to get tested this week, it'd be testing me at two PM or at three. I, I, I think that's unreasonable to ask us, you know, we have pool testing established, it's a set time. They are professionals, they can come down and be getting tested like everybody else. And I, I think that's the best way, most effective way to track, and I think it'd be. Unre, as PCI, it would be unreasonable to expect us to just kind of be brought by.
It's already there and being offered.
Correct, yes. That is, so again, it makes me that, that just.
Just what I'm hearing.
It makes too much sense, you think, but.
And it's a club, yeah, I agree. And we've had a couple, and I, you've got members at the great school have joined a pool, and beginning of school.
Yeah, I think you've seen the line.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't imagine, that, I guess my point is, with the number of people who've joined and people who are already vaccinated, that number, it wouldn't be, are really optimistic by January, that, that number is, is dying close to hundred percent. If you're, you know, one of five or ten people who aren't, I don't know why they would want to make themselves stand out. But I, I didn't, but people who feel however they feel, but I don't think anybody wants to stand out in any way at all, so. I could be wrong, time will tell.
What else? Well, move on to a discussion regarding winter sports tournaments.
Joel, you have to, you have to step forward. It just, you know, I feel, I feel really badly, we feel really badly, we'll concern these people itself, but you know, last, last month, last meeting, for us regular meeting, I said, I don't have recommendations for you. I did send out a new package this time, the NBC's, our superintendents, but the, the Joel, 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 Joel. Joel is the president of the NBC. So they had a meeting today, and he's passing out what the. He's passing out what they came up with today. I did say, you didn't miss this, yeah.
It was only one page, this actually came from the MPA this afternoon, about four o'clock. The NBC superintendent, stuff that Jim's group came up with. In my opinion, well, it's not successful, simply because six of the fourteen schools decided to do it all day. So I think it's passed, there's six schools that are completely unmasked with people on the floor. There's eight schools that are masked, refusing to play. So consensus was, when we left the building today, was that we have agreement that we follow whatever the whole building was. Since then, I've had a flurry of emails that superintendents have said, well, we're not masking no matter what. Said that they're not going to mask to play another team. Since then, those folks are now saying, okay, that's great, but we're not coming here to play some playing, that, but you can come playoffs.
Unmasked?
They're, no masks.
Okay.
Their response was, we're not gonna play at all. So at this point, there's teams that don't have full schedules.
It's a global thing.
Well, I mean, it's, it's really not that far-fetched, because it's what you asked kids to do already. Now you're asking, now you're asking the other team to do the same thing, because that's what the superintendents do at Portland. So the thing that provokes me more is that the MPA really can't make a prediction, because where they hold their tournaments. At the end of the season, they're also different. For example, in Portland, one venue requires that all fans are vaccinated. They're not the players on the court, and that there's another venue that requires everybody to be fully masked, for example, the Augusta Civic Center, where they're trying to play their Christmas tournament. So it's, it's all over the place, which have any answers, the MPA's change this week, that's nobody's fault, they're just deciding the thoughts, it's a guideline, which is pretty much what you've settled along. Basically, what that means for you folks is that you get to make the decision for what. That's, that's really what it comes down to. The MPA recommendations follow the CDC guidelines, they are guidelines, they're not recommendations. That's exactly what it says. And further to that, if you decide to go this route, there's some things that need to be done. Or. Uh, creating another cohort for pool testing. One of the recommendations. To ask people to vaccinate that are completely eligible. Which means everybody, there's some sort of. Also that anybody that is indoors is masked, including officials, which is all that's. So if you don't mask anybody on the floor, you don't have as many officials as you want. If you do, then you'll have probably about fifty percent of them available. Right now, we told them we'll have one official that has three leaves, which I'm actually, so I'm not, I'm not sure that that's. And you can probably tell from my tone, I'm just, I don't want to do that anymore. This is gonna be a, a lot of work also, as part of this recommendation, because we made a conference game today, is that we'll only allow home fans. They'll have four tickets apiece, that we will create contact tracing lists and stuff. It's just on the other layer, it's.
Can you just confirm that I heard you right? Six superintendents said, we're not masking, you can't make us, and eight said, we want to mask and we're not gonna play those of you that refused to mask?
So what's your question, I'm sorry, I think.
Did I get those numbers right?
Yes, yeah, so that's pretty much, it's fourteen, fifteen of us, and that's still a wild card, that still is kept out. They, last year, didn't allow people on that campus, but this year, they will, they have certain recommendations, and I don't know what those are yet, because they are next week.
Oh, wow. So this makes me cringe, because I know what we're doing right now.
And you mean, it, it's a whole discussion, please know that none of this is Joel's, don't, because I, I really don't care, I just want to know my, my children's. But on the other side of things, you're considered, you're considered a close contact in those situations. If you have a mask on. So you have the schools over here, yes, you have the schools over here going, you know, what's the point of wearing a mask, we already have to tell these kids that they're, if they're close contact and all that, because you can't really. Indoors, you can't really make the decision of, you weren't given that personal reward, it's different than outside. Then you have the fanatics inside saying, well, on the other side of that, you guys get to do the fall stuff, so we should have this opportunity too. You know, and it's really not above, in my opinion, what's, is or isn't safe, it's more about optics.
Caroline?
Would the students who, who are in pool testing go to those games and then they're deemed to close contacts, would pool testing cover that?
No.
According to this, students would not be allowed that.
No, it's not. Those students, only four tickets for that one.
And it depends on what set of rules you want to take, so.
And that, yeah, it's, it's not open to the general public. Can you, can you put that part about the.
It depends on what set of rules, well, first of all, I can't give you a set of rules. That's a decision you want to make tonight, the public, we have a long conversation about what rules, everyone wants you to do, but it's not what's in force. According to conference stuff, that, that's Central Maine, it's only home fans. And those home fans are consistent, or made up of, consist of family members, or four tickets. Because then we have the discussion of, well, Grammy lives in Florida, how do I say that's not a home fan? Because they're rooted for the home team.
But one of the things that we, we talked about today, and I have to just say this, go on, I'm talking today, and I said, you know what? I need to do this to you guys, but, I'm just, I'm in the same boat, just tell me what I'm supposed to enforce it, I will enforce it, I, I just, I don't have a I don't have a really strong feeling about this, I think we need to try and not be. I guess, when I say that I, I don't want to have a free-for-all, anybody shows up that wants to show up, that's, that's not good, it's very inconsistent with what we've done. But at the same time, it's like, pick whatever direction you're gonna go. Joel was saying that I think is most disturbing what we have got today. It, well, first of all, it's an NBC superintendent, we made an agreement, but not everybody was there. We didn't have consensus, but we made a consensus agreement. But almost as soon as we made that agreement, people started saying they weren't gonna follow. So it was a waste of time. Frustrating thing for me is that we have like, there's actually came up a very useful, that we have that we all, the people that are actually doing the work. A reason, but now we have six superintendents saying something. Well, except that we're one of the six that kind of went against the. They're good, I mean, we are, I know we are, you know, from one, like, one of the NBC's superintendents. So, but honestly, if I were going to, if I were going to make the decision, I would make the decision that we're being recommended.
If we opt to only play other schools that are requiring masks, what does that do to the season as far as scheduling games and the length of the season?
Oh, so I, I've just got an email about thirty minutes ago, we're here, we would have a ten-game schedule compared to eighteen-game schedule.
Okay, what would that do for eligibility for pro season?
We would have to probably play a team three times to get to the twelve, to be eligible.
That would be fairly new requirement, because I, you know, a team's a few years ago that played half a dozen games.
Last year, it didn't matter because it wasn't a tournament, so I'm not sure, because previous to that, there wasn't any restrictions that, that you didn't play your games forfeited, and if you had like a situation with snow day or something, you had extensions. So usually that to those teams, as far as I.
I don't, I don't even know if it answers this, Joel, but, so would the teams that are going rogue, I guess, announce to say, would they be eligible to play in the pro season? And what kind of problem is that gonna cause if you have the same thing that you're doing in the regular season?
Well, they could, but honestly, in my opinion, to answer your question, to my knowledge, is that it would come down to the superintendent making the decision. Am I going to toe the line, like I said, I wasn't beginning the season, or am I gonna put that so my kids can play at a tournament?
Wouldn't that also depend on where, like, if you're, if we're playing a tournament in Augusta?
Correct.
Everyone has to follow Augusta's rule anyways.
But if you're a non-masked school, you have to go be masked, and you all year puffed your chest and said, I'm not playing unless you're masked. Are you going to do that, or are you gonna toe the line, right? There's, there, there are so many different things that in fact the decision is not the answer.
All the others.
And I, and I seriously, now those people won't come talk to me unless you have a, a resolution to your problem. I don't see what that is.
Joel? If we had a chance to express ourselves as a school, I'm in favor of seeing people being able to attend the games as long as they're masked. And I don't understand, you know, I can understand why you may not take the other school's people. They gotta have a little bit of allowance to win a few extras anyway, but I just think that's important to the community, the community. Last week, go full TV or something like that, I, I just.
I mean, the games will be streamed, but I understand the consequence of that decision, maybe it's not wanting to play. But.
We'd all be nice.
Now, I can't, but I obviously reviewed every single thing, before we agreed upon today, but even in, even in a situation where people said they weren't gonna allow any visiting fans, we said that we would permit a camera crew. We have four people, whatever, be able to go in, so we can stream, live stream our games from those foreign gyms.
Yes, yep. I mean, there'll be ways to watch it, it's just being a person.
So if you, I just, yeah, I want to make sure I understand you right. So you're saying that if we wanted to say, do what Joe said, where we would allow our community and other teams won't play us, because that's too many?
That's, I, I can say with certainty that that's a very strong possibility, and somebody has said that to me, that if you allow me to have like the conversations that I heard today, it was certainly that if you're going to do something like that across contaminated cohorts, then we're not gonna send our kids to that part.
You might, you could have been absolutely.
Yeah.
That's a whole other layer too.
Well, I mean, I mean, in my opinion, it's really just about.
But even if everybody's.
You're making my life more difficult, so we're not gonna play you. So it's really crazy stuff, but I did word it.
It's surprising, because like, at Maine, they at least tell you, you're expected, you gotta wear a mask, but you also have to prove that you've had the vaccination too. And, but the players are basically not masked, but they're all that play monkey. Was, if that is a cross-determining shot, it's.
Yeah, and, and you know, you know, I'm just thinking of this too, just recently, I think I might have shared with you guys before, they had the Paul and Ross teacher, everybody was masked a lot. To not go well, at least because people wear their masks down, or they would buy a bag of popcorn and say they were eating, but keep it for a couple hours. I mean, there's, there's, you know, there's more to this, I mean, you can certainly direct me to make sure people weren't in masks, but I'm not gonna. I mean, you can certainly direct me to make sure people weren't in masks, but I'm not going to visit people who don't. I don't like calling the police either, but that's certainly not what it entails to run a game. I mean, there's just, I don't know, this isn't like a sit down, once conversation, I, I don't think. My life's easier if you say there's no spectators or what, all in, one way or the other. But I, I don't, I don't know what you want to follow, so. It's really no different than anybody else. It's just, we're running, running out of time, we start basketball in five years.
And the middle school started tryouts.
Yep, they, they, they've been all masked, right? They're all masked, yep.
Which is the first group?
Uh, I moved the first two, just because I didn't know what we're doing still. So, I, you know, honestly, I, like everybody else, I did something I came to talk about last year. That's not a playing game, that's just, that's, I think what we're all waiting on. Which they have been very clear all along, and just want to see, see guidelines as far as the FPA. But again, that's, yes.
Did the air exchange in the middle school get fixed?
Yes, yep.
I, the student leadership team at the high school had a meeting earlier in the week and we talked a little bit about winter sports. And, um, I mean, there, there were a couple of basketball players on that team. And obviously, they can't speak for all of the winter sports players, but they sounded like they were very excited about the idea of being able to have fans again. So I, I'm trying to represent them, but I can't say that they all think this. But to me, it sounded, it seems like they might, um, like they would be okay with not, with playing the same team a couple more times if it meant that they could have fans if other teams won't play us in that situation. But I, I will talk more with people about that.
I think I did share last meeting that they, they were extremes. With, even within our conference, there were people who agreed to a, to consensus, you know, red, uh, model. And then said, so, and even in a discussion, there were people who said, uh, totally masked, everybody masked, no fans at all. And then other people on the extreme saying, bring all the fans you want, no mask, you know, do whatever. So I, I'm not advocating for either one of those positions. But as Joel said, we just provide you guys with the information and you just decide how we're going to do it. I say we open the gyms up with a mask on.
I think it would be irresponsible of us to not work on contact tracing where everybody will be inside for more than fifteen minutes, sitting next to the people who are with them, whether they're masked or not. And so do we want to control the number of tracing that we have to do? Or do we want to say, build a capacity and we'll just deal with the under two hundred, whatever people that we have to trace? I don't think we have the manpower for that.
I mean, they're not contacting restaurants and stuff. I just have two, I'm sorry, two comments. One, if, if you say mask, then have mask. If you watched TV last year, if the kids can play basketball like this, just don't have to wear masks, just, they're really unaware. And, and, and I, I love what you mean, that leads to a, and you love it, but. So either do it or not, not mask, because that doesn't work. And the other thing is, if, if you think about opening everything up, which I would love to see on Pod Me Pod, that runs a higher risk of basketball plays being positive or being close contact, and it's going to wipe all your. So you, you roll a little bit of dice game, we're going to let, let it go and make it all season and they're like, great. Or you might be in the game too and you talk about your five players on the floor because they're, because they are close contact, fifteen minutes or direct contact. No way, you have to stay a basketball team in there on each other. So there's, you know, you, you, everything's risky, but that's something to consider that might happen. You might shut your program down quicker by letting it be wide open. And maybe not, you know, it's so crazy, hope it might not happen, but it, it's something I think to just think about too.
If the, if my understanding is that the players are either vaccinated or in pool testing, then they would not have to quarantine, they would not have to sit out.
Right, if they're vaccinated, they're absolutely.
Or in pool testing.
If they're in pool testing, they have to quarantine, not present in the community, but they would, they would find their sport and so on. As long as, as long as they're not proud of like our school games, outbreak, our school games. So, I mean, that, the ideal thing is.
That's a kid's choice, they know that they're playing the game.
Well, it's such an exciting time, especially families, friends who watch all this, that, be there. It, it, it may be necessary to even go to some kind of a cat system where, let's say my wife and I, all be, okay, give me a card, but at the same time, I gotta apply for the card, show you the two of us are vaccinated. Well, write my name down, write the number eight. I just bring that in and that, I know you're concerned about laying people off, showing all the rest of stuff that need a lot of people. It's a mechanism, it's just, that's all it is, is to simply say, we can't guarantee you can get anywhere else. But our place, you better do the following, you better sign up and prove everybody's vaccine. Don't worry about it, football game, they didn't wear the mask. They're going to wear a mask.
It's true. That's, that's a great idea, except, I mean, you're talking Saturday.
I understand.
Yeah, I know you do, I just, I mean, I get that, it's just.
Kelly? How, how many, um, how many athletes are on the biggest team? Right, the team with the most number of athletes, how many athletes are on that team?
For winter sports?
Yeah.
Um, I'm going to guess right now, lucky, uh, that includes four other schools. Uh, but I was, if you're talking just.
Yes, just winter.
Uh, basketball.
And how many students are on the basketball team?
Our boys will have about twenty-four, uh, twenty-two signed up right now, but.
How about girls?
Um, I'm not sure. Mr. Bier was talking about, it's not like the summer show.
Okay.
Nordic skiing and alpine are the worst of the, of the snow restrictions.
Right.
For a second.
We don't have wrestle.
What sports do we have here in the, for winter?
Basketball.
And hockey, and that's it?
And golf.
Yep. And hockey actually is dictated by where it's played. That's, that's going to be a whole conversation.
Maybe just basketball.
Yes, yep.
Somebody would like to know if we have, uh, we know when the signup cutoff date is for great basketball.
Great school?
Yeah.
Sign up seven, seven.
That's a rest program, right? Well, I was just thinking, I'm going back to contact tracing. If the largest indoor sport for winter sports that we need to concern ourselves with is twenty-four athletes. And we think about allowing four people per athlete to come. A hundred people in the stands for our team.
That would be two different things probably too, right? I would assume that would be a JV in varsity.
Yes. I mean, some, some schools are.
I'm just concerned about us at this point, not, not these other.
There'd be two different games of people who might be, might be.
Sure, okay, I understand, just, yeah, no, so. I just, I played field hockey in high school and I know I played an awful lot better when there were people watching me than I did when there was no one around. If we allow fans, I keep saying audience because I was also in theater. If we allow fans, um, to be in the stands from both teams, who's responsible for the contact tracing for the visiting team? Are our nurses responsible for that or is it the other school? So who does that contact tracing?
We have to decide that. And it's not going to be our school personnel. That's so.
Melissa nodded, didn't she?
I mean, that's, that's, the only thing that I'm thinking about for ease is if whether we allow, if we allow fans in there, is there a way to be there? I know Colony has a list, they have, they allow on their athletes' sports tickets. And then their boosters get four tickets, the boosters have to call ahead, put their name on a list, they know that they're there. If there was a way to have a sign and even if we had the computer set up and you, because sometimes people sign in and you don't know what they, who they are. If we had a computer with a telephone number and a name, and they could type it in when they come in and have our little hands in as the station or something, that might cut down a little on contact tracing, at least you know who's there and who's not there. I, I just, I, I would like to see, I mean, I would like to recommend vaccinations for the athletes. I don't think we can mandate them. And then I would, but I would, I would mandate if they're not vaccinated, they have to possess. That would be my recommendation.
Caroline? Sorry, are those tickets that families, maybe just for family members? Or would they be for?
Most of them aren't going to go.
Yeah. Because my only thing is, if they're for anyone, some kids in the high school would feel really excluded. If some athletes only bring their friends, many create like, I'm not popular, so I can't go to a basketball game. And I just don't want anyone to, I know that's such a small issue. It could mean to everyone.
That's a big issue.
But I don't, I just.
Well, I think it's an issue amongst family too, what, for family members too. It's a very valid point.
So.
So I, I, again, I, I just want, I keep saying this, like it's simple, and it's not. I don't have a real clear path, but it goes with the central, Joel, it's me, that's just like the side. For me, it seems like the thing that is most, the most consensus from the team, for even from decisions the NBC made, the athletic programs made today, and getting what we made is, uh, not to allow visiting spectators. I, I think, you know, it would be built, a position, build a platform, that you can tell where you are. I'd say no visiting, I would suggest no visiting.
Unless the part of the three person.
Unless the part of, I would say, I would say four.
Four person, I agree, yep.
I don't know how we contact, I think that it's possible contact tracing, it's a question we do, we don't.
Well, so that's another thing that's been going through my mind, right? Do we rope off or tape off every six feet this way and this way so that people can't sit in those places?
I know, high school did that last year, they had the, uh, the PAC was taped and baffled, whatever, they were. I, I think you'd have to do something like that. I, it's, it's not a good answer, we, Melissa.
Yeah, um, there was a suggestion today on the new nurse, um, briefly. I don't know how I'll do it, maybe I'll, um, and it was very common sports. And she had, Emily Colan had mentioned it, maybe it's a suggestion of for contact tracing in the stands. And this is just, there's no guidance out there, right? But it's more or less, if you know there's a positive, you just say, hey, by the way, there's a positive. And you, you're not contact tracing, but just, just, uh, air, you know, air. Whatever, I think there's been a positive. It should, it would ultimately all contact tracing, any school sponsored, is falling on well nurses. And that's the reality of it. Um, and so, so if it's a school sponsored with adults, that you're, you're going to make your own choice, right? Like you're, you're taking a risk to go into a building to watch, you know, your, all your children playing. So, I mean, I think just letting that community know, I guess, I mean, letting the people be, know the positive, that was a suggestion that was made.
So you would just do kind of a general announcement to anybody who was at the basketball, you know, on this thing, there's kind of a positive. I mean, when you go to restaurants, they're not keeping your names in, are right? And you're sent far away from them.
It depends upon the restaurant.
Yeah, I know most restaurants in Maine are not doing it.
So can I, um, I don't know, this was occurring, I think I know the answer, but I was not thinking before. Uh, adults that are in the building, um, that are, we require them to wear masks, say athletically. And we require them to sit distant, um, we don't do contact tracing for them. So it really does come down to the whole question about students. Do we, is it possible for us to, are our teachers, the middle school and high school already numbered or lettered somehow? We say, yes, no.
The, the middle school is not, uh, high school is.
If we, if they basically get, you know, to be like the professionals, we can have assigned seating in terms of you get this ticket for the seat.
Who's going to organize that?
That's sort of the point, it's just, I mean, I, I can certainly, I mean, this is, I thought about this one. I can certainly set something up, and I guess.
I don't know how to. I, I can't, if you want me in the gym to make sure people wear masks, I can't make sure that there's not. I can scream it down the hall, but I have to go in the dress because the. We can't be down there, I mean, going to also, we get concessions, so. I mean, I already know, I'm not a lot of including, right, in the gym, because that's a mask issue. But you also need to address that, because that's some of that booster's. We have to have a decision on that too. But my point is, is that's another area that we, and I'm sure those people would step up and say that, that, yeah. But dealing with people not wanting to wear masks that gather the game all the way, so they're not always very pleasant. I don't have that authority with adults going to, inside of a school.
I think we can say, I know it'd be very unpopular, but we can say that there'll be no concessions. I know it's a loss, but you know, if you have no spectators, which is the extreme, there's no concessions. We have limited spectators, I still say we have no concessions and, uh, it's just, those things, I don't know, trying to pick low hanging fruit.
Well, if you say no, no concessions, and you also say no outside food, then you eliminate already that situation where somebody sits with a bag of popcorn for the entire game, eating one kernel at a time.
Or people eating in the hallway for any reason.
Sure, yeah.
I think one of the things that, that Joel has said a couple of times, and I guess I would just say, whatever, whatever we come up with, it's going to require more game management. Joel cannot do this. It's going to require us to pay other people to, you know, and we're already kind of doing it with football and with all sports, actually. There's other people that are there in addition to help with the management. But we just need to figure out a way to give them some marching orders.
And we really should make this decision tonight because of how close we're coming to the wire or.
Yeah, we don't need to get until the fifth, I mean, until the December first, if the season is on the table. When we play, when do we play our first league games?
Uh, we can say that. I think it depends on.
That's accountable, MPA, he'll point you, is.
And you're saying we need to make our decisions so that you can go back and figure out who will play us, who won't play us.
And that's not considered a forfeit if they won't play us? Is that considered a forfeit if they won't play us?
Uh, I'm actually not clear on that, two questions.
Yeah, because I, I would. Yeah, because I would assume if they refuse to play, that would be a forfeit for them.
I don't, I don't think it will be a forfeit just because of precedents that's been set already.
Yeah, but that wasn't because we were masked or not. That was because we really physically couldn't play them because they I mean, that's right. I mean, to me, it's I don't know.
You know, I haven't had a lot of time to discuss it with my coaches, but I'm sure that the mask is a game.
Right. I would hope anyone would. Yeah.
But I also don't I, I don't Bruce Mountain didn't play us this year, shut down Florida COVID game, caught up on technology. Not play us because it was COVID. So I mean, it's, it's just really weird stuff. I mean, those schools may say, you know, you're not playing other teams unmasked, so they're not interested in taking risks. That's their right to do. Definitely.
So what, what is your you could pick the way it looked, which is
What would I pick?
Yeah.
Reality or other college?
For real, reality.
I don't know.
It's hard, isn't it?
I think
It's, it's not so much hard. It's just that there is a consequence for every choice you make.
What about the coaches?
The coaches want fans.
Coaches want fans. Where are they with the masks?
Right. It's kind of, in my opinion, it's, the masking is okay because it's relaxed. Taking down. So many, you know, that's something that says it's safe or whatever. And that's, that's an advantage at that point. If you are unmasked and then you've got the mask up, play a team, it's a disadvantage. So, I mean, I really can't answer your question because I don't know.
But you're, coaches don't have an opinion about it?
I told, I called, I spoke with Coach MacArthur today, you know, we had this conversation. It's pretty much whatever it takes to play. But that was also before I received that email, walking took the wind out of my sails because now, you know, schedule has been reversed too much. I don't know what that's going to look like.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's what I think. That's a consequence to a decision that we make. If you mask, you bring the game people. Don't ask. I mean, we're losing.
Yeah. When you're saying not masking, are you talking about just the people on court or everybody?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, that makes sense to me. That, that's just me. I mean, so we're asking what I want. I think it makes complete sense. By two rules, it makes no sense how it's transmitted. But the way the rules are set up, you're close contact, you know. That makes sense to allow them to do that. People that are sitting next to each other that are strangers per se for two hours. It's not made sense to do that. They're performing what we do today. That's, that's really where I get stuck is because they haven't forced something that at 2:30, watch yourself, go home. And I'm not talking to them, so I'm just watching, seeing, creating. I mean, that's a service. Because it's, these people all the time are attacked because we're just playing by the rules of the game. That's not me per se. So what if we if we, again, I'm trying to find a little hanging fruit we can all agree to. What if we say our, anybody who chooses to be on the team either has to be vaccinated or full tested? If that's the case, then we can, I think we can say that on the bench or not in the game, you have to have your mask on. And while you're playing, you do not. It goes back to what Tim said about figuring to make that choice. They are as protected as can be. I'm still a little bit troubled with the parents. Like, like Kelly said, I'm and I know Todd has made this comment a few before, Joel, you know. We don't have parents again, this year. It's going to be, it's really hard. Just a huge loss. So the low hanging fruit I put down, I wrote down, this is not an official, it's just me taking notes. Is vaccinated or athletes are vaccinated or full tested? I think we can make that the deal.
It would serve them well because then they wouldn't have to miss a game, right? Like we were talking about earlier, if they're not full testing, if they're not vaccinated, something happens and they're considered a close contact, they're out. I don't think any that's just me.
Why would athletes have to be in a separate pool? I mean, I know it might be easier for that, but not easier if they're already in another pool.
Oh, I don't know. That's one of my two questions. And I think this, this is just me talking.
You don't have to be
It's the same language that's in front of you. That's what this is. It's if, if, because I guess those folks would be safe that you're saying that they're all negative before they play a game. That's, that's just me talking, trying to make sense of it. I don't know. And that's what I've asked for clarification. I may get a response that says, no, it's just one or the other. That'd be awesome. G D, you want to weigh in on that?
I mean, that's not our pool, but the high school.
Say it again.
Our, our pool, not like
I know they're not, I know they're not, but they're all tested the same day, same time.
Right. So I mean, if they were, if they were testing something at school or they're testing that then they, that, that, they, that's their
It's their task.
Right. They don't have to have it into a basketball
Yeah, I agree.
Ten minutes of a game, rapid test, rapidness, that's, that's not right. They can join to
Uh oh.
Speak for the devil. During the school pool, I get vaccinated. Now, that's a great way for them to guarantee that they're going to what they should play. Then solve all the rest of the The only thing I can think about is if that pool, if it's a basketball pool, it comes back at the same time instead of the pools that are coming in randomly. That's my only Well, not maybe not. No, you have no idea. We don't know when they come back. Mostly within the next day, but I mean and it's good for a week.
I like, so I just like alarm bells went off in my head with this thought of allowing the athletes to be unmasked while they're actively playing. Here's why, okay? If I'm walking down the hallway and I'm unmasked, I am not expelling nearly as much air or anything as I am while I am running up and down a court. If I'm only running up and down a court with my other classmates, schoolmates, who are either vaccinated or full testing, that's one thing. But now you're asking me, or you're telling me I can be unmasked, breathing really heavy with someone from another school who may or may not be vaccinated and may or may not be part of a pool testing situation.
And it becomes a community spread.
Right. So that, it makes me nervous to say, yes, it's okay to be unmasked while you're playing. Although I know that it would be significantly easier for the players to not have to try to breathe through a mask. I'm concerned with the potential for spread. If, if, if the MPA is so split that they're not even in the same place, how do we know that the other teams that were willing to play would also play by those similar rules with their staff, with their players, that they're either vaccinated or they're in a pool? Which makes me feel really strongly that, that our, our athletes would need to be masked on.
I couldn't imagine playing basketball with a mask on. That's just me personally. I couldn't imagine. I'm having a hard time sitting here, not lining up in that. That's just me.
Wouldn't affect me. I just sat on the bench.
I think we should open, we should open up the community.
Yep, and I like Melissa's idea that somehow they find out there was a positive. Usually just speak up.
What about, so what about students?
Yeah. Anybody that wants to come to you. Yeah, you can. At least you know how long it would take her, but if you have that, we send that information down to the community. People aren't ready to drive.
Well, great. I mean, we'll draw then.
For the most part, three people, but I mean, some people.
But it's really, but how do you know that you don't have the opposing team's fans, fans sneaking in and saying that they're
Because we need a place of brand match for everybody to go.
Two people talking doesn't matter. We all enter. They're all masked.
Right.
So do we just say, all right, we'll open it. You have to be however far apart from each other. And hey, by the way, at the beginning of every game, we we announce if we find out that someone in this room is a positive, we're going to put a notification on the website, so check back. Would that suffice? Do we say, anyone can come and it doesn't matter how far apart they are?
Again, you do the recommendation.
Well, if you can't do the enforcement, then why bother recommending? So here's the bit, right? Why make a law if you're not going to enforce it? Why make the rule if you're not so touching a store and you can't tell someone what, why you? Yeah.
So I'm not, I'm not speaking for Joel, although I think I'm speaking for Joel. I personally love I just don't know why. It's going to be very unpopular, I would say. I know how significant this is for our community. But it feels like we're just saying, when it comes to athletics, we do everything we can to follow the rules, keep our kids safe during the day, and then we're just going to say the heck with it. I would rather, I would rather invest money to, I would personally, you know, if you want to allow more people, which I'm all in favor of, because I, I'm I think the notion of having as many people there as possible is a good idea. I don't think it can be whoever wants to show up. Enforce this and we need to enforce masking. And we're going to, we're in need to provide additional support for Joel can't do it. It's just not, we need to have people that are there. I mean, for mass control, so to speak, but I don't think, I don't think I would be comfortable. But ultimately, it's what you're going to have to live with. If you want first, I would love to see as many people there as possible. I just don't know what that's, what that could be. We said four per player?
That was the suggestion.
Yeah, I was thinking that it would be more like six to 10 per player. Or that's where it becomes tricky. And that's why I kept saying that earlier. Maybe we have a student section, which we should have anyway, as a long history of having a pretty proper student section, which makes all the difference in the world.
You want to try them.
Maybe them.
We might get more full testing after.
I don't think we can, but if we, if we section off a place and we, we have to limit it, it has to be a pool. Maybe 40, 50 students that can be chosen through a lottery. And they are, they are put in a particular section, spaced, you know.
What if we, sorry, I what if we said students could be on this side of the gym? And five or six or whatever per athlete who should be on the other side of the gym. Is it big enough that we could space that way?
Well, if you start with a quite good answer, yes, again, it's true. Yeah.
So I guess
Well, actually, they didn't put the sign with the back for the players' hour clock. They didn't put those bleachers down.
Okay.
But it doesn't mean we couldn't put them down. Especially, I don't know if you were thinking or had given any thought to how we set up the bench, bench area. But actually, we wouldn't really spread them out. They may not have to be spread out as much. Maybe we can pull, you know, the bleachers out our way. So I, I don't mind. I like that idea a lot, actually. Put our fans behind their bench would be great.
I have a question. When you buy some tickets, we kind of just touched on it for anybody. So if a student gets or a player gets four tickets or six tickets or whatever, and they invite their grandparents who will come out of town, how is that any different than a visiting team?
They would be sitting with family members possibly and not mixing with anyone else.
True.
Although my family doesn't mix with your family necessarily. He doesn't mix with Kelly's family, so that's no different than having visitors either, you know, to make that point as well. But at least you do, you are somewhat controlling, not having an exorbitant amount of people in the gym. You could also limit capacity too. I mean, even if, you know, you say we're going to do half capacity. First 200 people there are allowed in and
I would say we have the ticketing system. So if you want to go that route, we could say it's no different than, you know, I went to see the Red Sox, right, this year, when they were only allowing 2,500 people. Just have to be able to go online and win one of those 2,500. I don't know. I have big feelings about that.
Yeah, sure. Wait, wait, wait. Caroline's had her hand up for a little while.
That was from the Raffles type thing where you put your name in and then you get Joseph to go to the game. I can't say for all students, obviously, but most students go to the game not just to watch, but to be with their friends. So if someone were to win and none of their friends won, they just wouldn't go. It really
Truly. Excellent.
Do you have anything you would like to trigger?
In terms of masking, bans, all that?
Yep.
I mean, obviously, I want kids to fight, but I'm a big believer in that these kids have lost the ball.
Yeah.
And whether we want to look at the facts or not, holders bring their deals to us as adults. And I feel like these kids have lost the class. And I think that as, as a group, we can come up with the best for both of us. And that is pool testing, all masked up, kids are not masked on the floor. And we will be committed to be a pool tested. We will know if, if there is a positive case that we don't want to play. But for all the NBA that I've known, this is how they were able to go fully with their season with, with testing. And we must test if we're going to do that for them. If I watched kids play in mass all last year, it was a disaster in terms of policing it, I'll come down. It was very tough on them to play in them. If that's what it takes to play, I'm a supporter of that. But I'm more a supporter and we'll do whatever it takes in terms of trying to get kids in a pool that's our pool, to get them to be able to drop.
Do you?
When they're playing.
When they're playing. Everyone else, I'll wear, I'll wear 45 masks. On the sideline. Everyone that's on there will wear I think when they're on the floor, they should be able to take them.
Public comment just says cloth, cloth masks really don't do much. Kids still catch COVID while having a mask on. Kids still get exposed while having masks on. If they are playing a sport, how can you expect them to be able to breathe properly? Having a mask on while running up and down a court is very restraining and can cause asthma attacks or something else.
Thank you. Kelly? I don't know if any of the three of you have an idea of this, but what are the other schools' opinions on the athletes doing a rapid test before every game?
What are their opinions?
Yeah, has that come up?
No. No, I can just say that K V A C is masking. Or tonight, the M C is lit. And the state, I, I didn't give you all the problem with that matrix that was done for all students that are in the states. We're really hoping we did this back in October.
Just looking to see if you're okay, so what are we going from here?
I am not a fan of just opening the gym up, period. I am a fan of opening the gym up to a limited capacity. Regardless of whether there are tickets issued or not. You know, first, however many people can come in. I think it would be an absolute nightmare to try to say only with their residents or only family members of the, of the athletes can come in. Only winter residents, or only family members of the, of the athletes can come in. Um, I think that's just not realistic. I don't think we have the manpower. To, to police that kind of a thing. Um. I can only speak for the high school that I went to. I've never been in this high school's gym, which is shameful of me, and I know that, but. Uh, in my high school, don't make it down, we.
Charlie's never been.
We had uh. Bleachers that pulled out, kinda like in sections.
Yeah.
So could we do that here, like every other section gets pulled out?
There are way, if we want to do a limited number of seating, I, I think that's, again, that to me is kind of low hanging fruit. Um, I would not suggest you do every other section, only for safety reasons.
Okay.
I see people fall off the weight board.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can pull them up a certain distance, uh whatever. But I, I think that's a decision you have to make, and then allow the, you know, Joel and. You know, Mark and whatever, to, and sue for the, for the middle school to figure out, yeah, some of the details. But I've asked the middle school to tell you, this was part of our conversation at the N B C, and there was some differences because gyms are all. Um, Mont Valley, for instance, is, is adjusted. Uh, and so it's okay, honestly, it's not really adjusted, but we're, we're a good sized gym. Lisbon's new gym is huge. Um, Winter Middle School has bleachers on one side, and they're what, five or six deep, they're not very, it's not many, you're not gonna put many people in that gym. You know, and honestly, I don't mean to be mean, because I love middle school sports, and that's where it all begins. Um, but in terms of parents and the ability to, to have families see their children. Far more worried about that at, at the high school, and I think our, I think we could have. Uh. Limited number of spectators. You make an excellent point that I hadn't thought about, I mean, I was really leaning towards the only winter, after winter. Um. Maybe we figure out, I have any idea what the capacity is, you know, the gym? Yeah, seven fifty, sweet, but if we said we went with. Three hundred, and we said.
Do we normally get, I mean, I know it depends on the season and how the team is, but do we normally have three hundred people in there at a basketball game?
It depends on which way. But we can, but we can, so if we said, this, I'm just throwing this out, this is really off the top of my head. Um, capacity of three hundred, um, fifty for away, two hundred and fifty for home. And again, you make an excellent point, you know, students, whatever, and it's, it's, it's first come, first served, so it's, it's not the lottery, so your, your point is well taken. I don't know, I think if we had, if we limited to three hundred, we probably can distance them and have an expectation of distancing. Uh, it doesn't feel, I don't just have to say it to go through all that, there's something, but it still doesn't feel right to me in terms of everything we're trying to do.
Well, I think we do. Need to figure out personnel for, unfortunately, for mass policing. And here's the deal, you don't follow it, you're out, I mean, you're, you're out and you're not invited back. And that's just the point, that's what we've gotta do until things change, if they change.
I'm a sucker.
Um, and unfortunately, I agree, if we have to get police involved, we do, no, it's, it's a waste of their time, but. It's, it's also being, making sure we're safe.
For the, like, fifty per away before, whatever, for, I'm sorry, I don't really listen. But the, the tickets be sold online, because my only thing is if someone drives here. And then they get there, and they're like, sorry, we're, we're, they'll be like, well, I drove all the way here, you're telling me I can't do it?
We have the ability to do online, right, Joel? We do, I just, I can't, I don't have the ability to determine if it's a one person.
But two, oh, that's, well, let's see, you could maybe open two tickets, though. One for away only sales, that you would release to that, and that would be a limited capacity of fifty, and one for home. But you, you know what I mean, and I know that doesn't mean that someone from away couldn't. Buy a home ticket, but if they didn't necessarily have the link.
Yeah, I, I think if you're gonna say there's three hundred people in the gym, you have to split hairs. It is, there really isn't, because of what you just said.
Yeah.
The second, I mean, it's a way to do passports, except maybe if it's next, ask them, or a friend to go, they can share the passport. I mean, it's in the system. I, I was actually just trying to protect the um. Have the bulk of the numbers, I wanna protect the winter fans. You know, so in my perspective. If you wanna protect the winter fans, just say, winter fans off. So that's honestly, if I were gonna have to make a decision, if we can't, if we can't police it any other way, that's what I'd say. Pick a limited number. I'm not sure that three hundred, three hundred feels like, like it's much, whatever, but even if it's three hundred. Um, say it's just for winter fans and. What's that? That's what Todd and I discussed this afternoon. That number, three hundred? No, just, just that a cap would make sense. What about, um, but we would still honor, in the same way that other schools, the N B C schools said that we would honor a crew. Uh, to go live, what's called livestreams, and away games, so our, our fans are at least good to see. Uh, the games away. Hopefully, our, our kids are playing, even though it's hostile territory, they're getting to play in front of.
Sorry, I can't, your kids see Caroline.
Yes.
Get a repel at that. Uh, why wouldn't you limit the number of fans per student? What if a family of ten takes the rest of the ticket, and now another kid can't have any fans? That's not fair.
I think if we, if we, if we go with a number like three hundred, I don't, I don't think that's a problem.
Yeah.
I just gotta go back. Good. Uh, Joel, uh. We were talking about capacity numbers and everything. We started to talk a little bit about spacing. And the closeness that people can get into, sitting in that gymnasium. Have you given any thought to perhaps taking some type of tape that. Can't sit on a green piece of tape, that'll space people out in the gymnasium?
Yes, uh, but again, it was. Yes, shouldn't say but. The reality is, is that, um, I just, I don't. If there's a family of ten, why would I make it six feet wide?
Right.
Sure.
Because you don't know. You walk into the door, you know these are the rules, and you're sitting next to someone less than six feet. That's their choice. They take that risk of getting.
Well, I was thinking, not only just. If, if I move over here, wants the gym to get six feet away from Kelly. But my thought was, the people behind you. We have the worst people of all breathing on you, and whatever they're doing, and uh. That's been one of the problems, I know, with concerts and stuff, even, even with the hockey game you went to. There was no real spacing taking place at all, because we were all wearing masks. I, I just, I throw that out, I, I'm not sure. I'm not sure we have, but I, I do agree that, I agree with the fan part, fan part's very important. Because my question also is about the mask and playing. I don't have any problems with what you're saying, it kinda puts us maybe in a different category, right? Maybe teams that are gonna wear their mask will not play us. Would we be flexible enough to play mask to mask, is what we would.
Yeah, I, I think from our conversation today, we had to wear a mask, so we had to lose games. And has the NBA decided, given the venues, the different venues, what their open tournaments gonna play? Because you said that before. It depends on where you play, it's not the NBA making decisions, it's the venue. Do we know based upon the three hundred venues that we play in, Bangor, Augusta? When we were performing today at the Augusta Civic Center, there's no limit to ban there. I don't know about players. See, that really feels a little bit weird to me, if I'm a place that has seat, you know, seating. Then I don't know why you don't say, even if you're family, because I don't wanna police families. I would just say, every other seat you can sit in, uh, or something like that, but. But we're getting closer, I think.
So we have mandatory pool testing, as sort of, as everyone's sort of in agreement with that?
For this, for the athletes?
For athletes?
Even if it's.
Yeah.
Are you doing the whole?
Yeah, I would say yes.
What about break for cases?
What about them, they, it's.
But that's what I'm saying, if you say if you're vaccinated, you don't have to be in the pool. You miss those potential break for cases. So if you just say straight across the board, if you were a student athlete, athlete, you need to be a member of the pool.
Or coach.
Coach, coach, we need to go, um, we said all athletes, winter sport athlete, if, if, whether it has to be in a pool test.
And.
And coaches.
Yeah.
And coach. We'll see, the classes already decided, because they're on a special condition. Right.
I mean, that, if, if that gets us to do that, then absolutely, I think.
Coaches might be an issue unless they're school personnel, I just gotta be honest with that.
Well, they are, they're all.
All our coaches are school personnel?
We hired.
No, no, I mean, I mean. They can't protest at six o'clock at night. They have to be protest during the day. So I don't think you can mandate that for, for coaches.
The vaccinations, you know. Let's take our coaches, have to be vaccinated. Uh, one of the things that maybe, see if we can do this one, I, I like the notion, whatever the numbers are, that viral leaders. Will, will be removed from the game, I'm not committed to return. You'll have to decide, they wanna be at the game, or they, if they wanna be a protester, or whatever, make a stink, then fine, they can, they can be removed. Now welcome back. Um, how about limiting the number of um, just our fans to three hundred?
Could we say half capacity? Because that's gonna be different from middle school.
Sure.
Oh.
That makes a lot of sense.
We'll hold the gyms at half capacity.
Capacity is three seventy-five, not.
Well, but I mean, if we're thinking about spacing, right, if we're thinking that's the issue, with spacing.
Why don't we say a little bit enough, it's three hundred design school at half at middle school?
Okay, I can remember that.
Check.
So you probably have to have a number for that.
They will, we can figure it out. How about um, visiting spectators?
Wait.
Oh, yes.
A question on, from Zoom, does anyone on this committee have a medical background, or have any medical knowledge to back up their reasoning?
No, but we've been tasked to do this, and that's what we have to do.
And we've been, we've got, Joel can certainly tell you, I can tell you, that this is not the first time we've had this conversation, it's been held at state level. I said I shared the matrix that um, the superintendent's quickly put out. Um, looking at all of the regions and all the conferences. Uh, they've, they've got plenty of input from the C D C and, and uh. All over the state, so no, I'm not, I'm not a medical professional. Uh. I think it, you don't have to be a medical professional to know that, that um, masking is. Is, is challenging at best.
This is all challenging.
But I've just been in terms of, you know, uh, uh, this would be the year I would be happy to sit on the bench.
Yeah.
Because I don't think I'd be go up and down the floor more than once. Todd, I can't wait to see Todd doing it again with his mask on, it'll be, it'll be, that'll be worth the price of admission right then.
Well, we're saying that kids on the floor do not.
Right, right, we haven't said that, yeah, but that's where, that's, I think we're leaning, I was talking about coach itself. Oh, you know what, Coach Bear may not be much better, so we'll, we can see that.
Is the coach considered on the floor?
No.
And thus we're not needing to wear a mask?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
So we're not saying no, we're saying limited numbers, but not, we're not limiting it to.
I think it would be possible to decide.
Yep, I'm good with that, I, I'm, I think I'm in the same place as Joel, I'm good with any of this, I'm just trying to throw some things out there that you guys have said that we can. I, I think, I would say, and I am advocating this one, no concessions.
I would agree with that, myself.
Sorry for the boosters, I really am, but.
No, but maybe they can figure out something else to do, a raffle or something, or a fifty fifty, or.
That's a good idea.
Or something, because I, I really, it is, it. Yeah, the boosters do a lot, and that's a main thing for them, and I think that really will. Hurt, and I think we do need to be a little.
I think we should, I think we should recommend distancing.
Yeah.
I would personally say fire, but I, I, again, it's, it's a nightmare. When you go with three hundred people, it's gonna be a challenge. Uh, so, recommend distancing? Katie?
If you're, we're not wearing masks, and we're not really consuming this, if you have concessions, if you wanna eat outside.
No, I'm saying, we're, we're saying, we're saying. Can we say all students mask?
The only people not masked would be the players.
But that's what I mean, if we're having people not masking playing sports, I mean, if we're doing all that concessions. We're, we're talking about risk, the risk of spreading COVID by someone standing in a concession stand, having a cold drink or a cough, and it's really. Not high on my radar, or I think any other work, so. I mean, taking it to the gym, that whole thing of saying, if I aspire to outside, we'd let people eat, but I don't, I would think, I, I personally, not. I wouldn't have. So for example, I happen to have some concessions outside the gym.
I didn't, no, that's another thing we have to police.
Well, it is, but then again, if they, if they bring food and drink into the gym, they're out of the gym, and they're not allowed back.
So just.
If we allow that.
I wouldn't take the chance.
As far as the boosters go, I, Gina and I got a text from one of the presidents, and he says boosters will help out however we can. Um, and then it says. Basketball has their own boosters, and we can't touch fundraising.
So basketball has a separate boosters from the regular boosters?
Right now, that's probably what we're working on.
Okay.
Um, but she would rather that we can have fans.
Yeah.
Well, we can always revisit this too.
Yeah. Could we say, if we allow concessions, they can only be consumed outside of the gym?
I just wouldn't go there.
Because enforcement's so difficult.
I like the idea of just changing. That would be.
That would go to basketball.
Okay, I'm sorry, Caroline, I keep missing you.
This might be a silly question, but with the no food or drink policy inside the gym, does water count for everyone to drink?
Not for athletes.
So, so, spectators can have.
Correct.
Aren't there, are there? Are there, what do you call water fountains in, inside the gym?
No water fountains are working.
Water fountains outside the gym.
They're not working.
They shouldn't be working.
Those make me.
I haven't been drinking water, I'm obviously.
They converting all of our water fountains to these, like bottled waters?
Yeah. And those are working?
Yes.
Couldn't they be turned off at night, though?
Well, it doesn't matter, you just can't, no one can have water drink.
True.
There's no reason that they should be, anybody should be outside the gym doors, if we're not doing concessions.
Exactly.
Except, obviously, well, no.
Well, bathrooms, bathrooms are out there.
Right, they're out.
The information's not there.
You know, we can manage, we can manage those, those things, we need to get sort of bigger. Um, we haven't said anything about, we haven't made a decision, at least I haven't written down that we made a decision. The athletes on the floor participating in the game, masked or not masked?
Makes me so nervous to say not masked. Could we? Opt to revisit that decision?
We can revisit any of this stuff at any time.
But I just wanna make sure that that's in writing, right, that we're going to revisit this based on numbers and situations as they rise.
The only thing is, is I think it really affects. What Joel tells other teams.
Yeah.
I think what's gonna end up happening, a lot, like what's happened with football this year, even though that was outside, forget about. Well, no, we lost a game, we lost two games to COVID, so. If we do this, there's a strong likelihood that we're gonna lose games to the team we're playing, or our own team. Um, getting COVID, I, I guess. Can't believe I'm saying this, but I guess that's. You know, if we say that we have to test and we have to push them for be vaccinated. We have to roll that dice.
And mask on the court?
No mask.
Oh.
Mask on the bench. Mask on the bench. And 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 coach double masks.
Or I heard forty-five.
I thought he said four or five, but I.
And and with the, with the understanding, um, Coach McCarty, that if a team would only play us if we do mask, then we would be fine with masking? Or is that a double edged sword, Joel, as one of the others?
No, I I think they'll be fine, I, we're meeting tomorrow, there's coaches at the discussion. So I'll do it, see what's happening here, but obviously the discussion that was had with Arthur is, you know, if we have to mask, you know, come here if you're not masked, if you're masked here, or if you go there twice, whatever.
Okay.
There's a matter of this.
Yep.
I think if we can, if we can take care of what it looks like when we're playing in winter. We, we don't have any control, or if we say kids on the floor are are uh, are not required to be masked, if somebody does want to play us because of that, they can make a decision. Maybe the coaches and and Joel to mask for that game, if they want to, uh, or not. Those people can decide to come here or not.
And we put in writing that masking is an individual preference unless another team requires it. So what if there are some team members that want to be masked, right, if we have it in writing, it would be a lot easier to say, hey, don't pick on that person because they're wearing masks.
So it's mask option?
Mask by choice.
On, on the court.
Right.
It's probably a better way to say it.
Yeah. I have it written down, actively play. Visiting spectators, I think, yes.
Yeah, of course.
I just, I just ask them, they know I'm gonna get calls from parents, from other kids, non-sports kids saying how come there's no masks in these sports and my kid has to wear a mask all day long in school and they have drama and like, how come that? You know, once again, how come the sports kids inside it, I mean, I'm, I'm, cause I know I'm gonna get a ton of calls and a ton of emails and a ton of emails, you know, just saying, explain to me why, so just give me a, give me a script to explain to them why that's, why that's okay, I'm gonna.
Because we're requiring full testing or encouraging vaccinations and we're really hoping that um, these kids have a season, just like we're really hoping that kids get to stay in school by being vaccinated and by full testing. Um, hopefully these masks can come off at some point, I wish they could. Um, in the classroom, but I I don't know, that's.
Another distinction is that.
They're not running and breathing heavy in the classroom, like, well, gym class, they don't.
But um, sports is optional, whereas actual.
That's.
That, that's a big difference.
And I do think there is something to be said for the exertion that participating, it doesn't matter hockey, basketball, anything you're doing, um, that masks do create for an issue, I, I don't believe people would say that, you know, it's a real problem for their kids to wear masks, I just don't buy it. I, 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 you can ask any of the administrators who have sitting here. From my perspective, I'm, I'm not, I'm in buildings a lot, particularly in the grade school, and I see very little uh, non-compliance with that. I hear from you administrators at the high school about how vigilant the, especially the upperclassmen are to find upperclassmen here, who who really need that sense of, you wanna be here, so this is what we need to do, so. Uh, I think there is enough difference in terms of the exertion and whatever. And I get that, you know, a violence under another one of those things where there's, there's, is there creating consistency, sure. I'd be the first to say that, but that's why we spent, we spent hours, um, I don't know what time it's spent, but spent hours the other night spending a long time to make this a big issue. And that's why Joel and I have been in the company with a real clear um, recommendation, because statewide, there is no clear recommendation.
I'm sorry, Jamie, that's a situation where you forward email. Look, and I'm not being kind, I'm just saying, I didn't mean that, you know.
According to Joel, we talk.
But that's why I say that, is because I sent out um, a few emails to my teachers saying, I don't want you to respond to any disgruntled email that's beyond where you feel comfortable, like, whatever it is. I don't want you responding to emails that are questioning what we're doing. So they forward all the emails to me and I make a phone call. And usually by the time I'm done talking, we're on this, you know, we're, we're maybe not in agreement, but we're okay with each other. I, I mean, very rarely hang up with extremely disgruntled, yeah, it begins in a, you know, like a uncomfortable conversation. But usually by the time I'm done, we're okay with each other, so that's why I say it. Cause we, we try to take things off people's plates and I really honestly, I just think that you should respond to those emails, Jim. Or Joel, or whoever, but not Jamie.
Yeah.
I don't think.
No, I agree with, a hundred percent agree with that.
Yeah.
So one of the things that I shared with the administrative teams and I shared with the uh, staff, the email earlier was people complained about um, schools and what schools were doing way before COVID. Um, now with, with things being tougher and tighter, they're, they're, you know, they're, they're being more critical. A lot of people being very, very sensitive and I keep saying here and there for so, than other places I've been. And I see what some of my colleagues are dealing with from the community, we don't deal with as much of that. Um, people have complained about athletes getting preferential treatment in, in whatever the case may be, long before COVID. Um, so is it gonna happen? Sure, sure. Um, so we just have to deal with.
And I, I really hope we have this discussion about uh, drama or uh, band or chorus happening and how we're gonna control that.
Sure.
There's nothing more I wanna see than students performing and being able to perform at their best, and I think that's what we're trying to allow them to do as well, so.
So what have we missed? I mean, is, or what else is missing? What I've read off of my list, we recommend distancing, no concessions. Um, athletes are vaccinated or full tested, um, violate, people who violate the rules will be removed and not permitted in the future, we're looking to limit the numbers. Three hundred at the high school, half the capacity to middle school, that ends up being athletes on the floor will be not be masked, we will mask if we want to play, was a, is a sort of, you don't have to necessarily add that. But, and then mask optional on the floor.
Okay, think of one thing we haven't talked about. The referees. If they're gonna be.
Do we get to decide then? We do get.
Then I would say it would be the same as athletes, they're on the floor, it would be mask optional.
How about testing or vaccinated?
Do you know if officials have to be vaccinated? Is there a requirement for officials to be vaccinated? Do they, if, and they're not considered school employees? They will be considered school employees?
No.
Oh.
No, it's a contract.
Okay, well, that was gonna be my next question, after they, yeah, after they fall under that one hundred.
Yes.
Cal, so they will either have to test to be vaccinated.
Yes.
But not till January.
We did, we have a situation last year where we had a referee that was negative, I mean positive. What do we, what else we missed, guys?
Is practice considered on the floor?
That's a great question. Why would we treat practice any different than we treat a game?
That's a good answer. So kids who are actively playing would be okay unmasked, but if they're sitting on the sidelines, they need to be masked.
So then practices are mask optional if actively participating.
Practice follows the same rules as games.
Practice is the word we used to say, which I like the should, should mirror the game.
Yes.
Practices are mask optional if actively participating.
Joel, is there anything else that we need to address that we haven't?
Let me look.
No. I would, you know.
Oh, we didn't say, we didn't say anything with it, spectators have to mask.
Yes, we did.
Yes, they, well, it's not, they, they, yes.
Masking anyone not actively playing.
And then, in some way, you need to define that, it says, you are a spectator, you're wearing your mask.
I thought you had said that if both players, even if they are vaccinated, were, were, had to be.
Yes.
Unless they just. We could give you a little balance.
All, yeah, all, all athletes who need to full test.
Mandatory fraud.
This does say, and I don't know how that would happen, Jim. Full screen testing of all indoor sports and stuff, including students, coaches, administrators, and hockey players.
On the back, the second, the left on the top.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't understand how that could even be managed.
I'm actually looking at the Mont Valleys superintendent's proposal. See, we've covered everything, it's not that we're going with this, but we're gonna see if we've covered it. We didn't put, we shouldn't, oh no. Does it go in our motion that we're gonna, no, it might. I'm just thinking something for you to work up to, I want us, I really want to insist or push the NBC schools to allow us, even the ones that don't allow spectators, they allow him to, so we can livestream our games.
That's, or yeah.
Okay.
I can move motion and we put that.
Oh, no.
This isn't something.
Right.
I just read in the back of the paper that it says music is performing arts should follow the same guidelines as athletic programs. So it's hard to judge during a play when you're actively participating, cause like I'm, not to brag, but I'm the lead of the play, so I'm always actively participating, so I get to wear, I don't have to wear masks the whole time, but people with smaller parts are having to go on and on, taking masks on and off.
Yep.
It, it's, it's just weird to me that they expect them to follow the guidelines when they're completely different.
So may I ask?
That means they have to be.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, that, yeah, that's one, and so people who this is, this is actively masked, this is not, so if I'm a, I'm a person who's not the lead. So I get to pull, I get to pull my mask down when I'm, you know, or whatever. I don't.
I, I, I agree, it's different, but I, I, yeah, if you're on stage. Um, then you can not wear a mask if, if you're comfortable doing that, I think that would be, you know, obviously a personal choice too, but.
That will eliminate some of those questions.
Um, and then if, you know, if you are coming on and off, then keep your mask in your pocket if you want, if you're offstage. Masked up and, you know, but yeah.
So somebody else is looking at this list here. Ice cream events, we talked about staggered ventures, we can manage that. Is it playful? Modified or absence of concession stands, we talked about that, offerings, we haven't talked about. Influencers, we talked about. I think we've covered.
So do I make a motion?
You do.
Just to clarify, we have to mask for a team, are we requiring that also?
Of officials?
So if you want my ass if we're not masked, is that also a purpose? I want to ask a question. Cause that, that includes timers, goalkeepers, announcers.
I would assume they would be concerned on, that's my assumption, they would be considered to be on the bench.
Yeah.
So they would have to be masked at the scorers table.
Score, scorekeepers.
Yeah, officials, we already said, we did mention that that would be by their choice, because they would be active, active on the floor.
We're saying if the teams, if they want to mask.
Oh.
Unless we're masked. We say yes, that's fine, we'll mask for that game.
I don't think we have control over that.
I don't either.
Contact, contact assignment, say.
Yeah.
So, you know, uh, you know, they want some team won't play us unless you, you send me two officials that'll mask.
Yeah.
They say no, then we can't do anything about that.
Yeah, yeah, I like that.
Don't we run down through this list again, you have it all.
No, but I wanna read from your list when you, after you read it.
You don't wanna read.
Yeah, I teach middle school.
So, um, it's no particular order, that's why I draw it down, we're gonna recommend distancing, there'll be no concessions, unvaccinated, students are vaccinated or full testing, no, no. Um, they have to be full tested. Recommend vaccination.
I have kind of a stupid question with the full testing.
Yeah.
If they full test on Wednesday and I'm absent on Wednesday and I'm an athlete and I miss my full testing.
Then you're not.
Then I don't play for the week.
Or if it's one or two athletes, do you, do you test?
Do you PCR test them? Or rapid?
Do you rapid test them?
Full testing's a PCR.
I know, but do you, do you rapid test them?
How do you handle that normally in a pool, if, if somebody who's part of a pool is absent?
If they're out and.
If they're close contact?
No, just in general.
Then they just follow up, like, if they're considered a close contact, it's a week of PCR, we need to.
Who are they?
Are there next week?
But that is standard operating procedure, you always follow up if somebody, if they missed it.
Wow.
You guys.
That's why we're, we've been with the CDC upgrade. So finishing the, um, so it's recommended vaccination required, full testing violators. Um, spectator violators will be removed and not permitted in the future, limit numbers to three hundred at the high school, half the number middle school, um, on the floor, not masked. Uh, we did actually give her that because we said. Um, but we will mask if we want to play, that's our choice. Uh, mask optional on floor, referees a mask optional, practices are mask optional, if actively participated. And masking anyone not playing spectators, um, all masks, so anybody that's not actively participating is required to be masked.
Is this for just uh, winter sports or is this for all?
Winter sports. This is winter activities.
Activities.
Yep.
So drama.
Are you asking something?
Yes.
Winter activities.
So would drama be half capacity?
It would have to be.
Probably, probably do that anyway.
Okay, to be honest, that would maybe be about.
Well, as I say, we can always visit that and we're supposed to.
No, we have to be. No, 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 I mean, we just have to be optimistic. Attack the house.
We might just have to do more than that.
Yeah, that's true.
Oh, there's two, okay.
All right, so Sue, do, do you need to add a motion or can I just make the motion?
Were we going to do online ticketing only?
No.
And, and just say if you show up and we're out of capacity to grab, have a good day?
Joel, do you think that, online ticketing only or no?
Yeah.
Online ticketing only or at the door?
What would be the easiest way to? Well, I'm just thinking about enforcing uh, capacity.
What if they buy a line?
I, I think the. I I think the online, I don't know, somebody said this earlier, what if somebody drives over, what if somebody drives from Booth Bay? Gets here and we're at capacity.
That could happen in a real game. Get here early.
No, no.
And we said three hundred.
Are coaches and players considered as part of capacity?
No. So if we say three hundred, that that covers.
Yes, I can say three hundred.
So tickets only? Advanced tickets and online only? Yeah.
We can obviously sell it at the door.
Somehow we need to let them know, if they buy them online, they know they're gonna get in. If they come to the door, we need to have them sold for many tickets, they can take their chance. But there's no guarantee. Like somebody said, we certainly had that issue before.
So why can't you just make a motion?
Yeah, I just need Jim's cheat sheet.
That was really, you say after.
Oh, yeah, I have.
You won't.
Yeah.
I know we call them being mean.
So. I move to. Proceed with. Adopt, thank you, um, as read by Mr. Hodgkin, the. Winter activities for high school and middle school.
Second.
Sports.
No.
Activities, activities, not sports, sorry.
Uh, is it just high school and middle school? We're thinking about music, elementary school.
I mean, that's, that's why we said activities, not sports.
Right, so but you said high school and musical, middle.
High school, middle school, yes.
But the elementary school is looking to start beginner band.
Yeah, concert, sorry.
Yeah.
And then winter?
We have chorus happening now. We haven't scheduled any concerts or things like that.
Yeah, if they have a concert, I say we just come back and.
Simply say for the month.
So the winter school district and not limit it to just those two.
Sure, to the winter.
School system.
Public school system. District wide.
She said.
Move in second, do we need any other discussion? All right, um, I will, I will call the vote, all those in favor. And all those opposed.
I can't get behind the options, masking on.
I love it.
Both passes four to one.
Four, four.
Yes. I gotta get up, throw my papers in, back to my agenda. Hi. I will undertake a motion to authorize two hour early release on Wednesdays when it is a five day school week, beginning January fifth, twenty twenty two, for the remainder of this school year.
Still moved.
Second. Moved in second date, this is a question.
So let me just say. I had to put a, you know, some sort of, uh, facsimile of what was discussed, so. I would just, no, I just would like to say, I would like this committee to follow the trial, instead of this. Roberts rules, whole process, I would like, now that's on the floor, the public knows it's being discussed and voted on. Uh, however you want to shape this motion, if you. Janet and Kelly is the, uh, Hoover and the second, if you can have a, just an agreement at the end of this conversation, what motion is gonna be, that would suffice.
Okay. Yes, Kelly, we've had a lot of feedback about this over the past week. And I think the biggest thing that I heard that made the most sense is, please, if you're going to do this. Let it be a regular early release, not a shortened release period. Everybody's already familiar with how to handle an early release. Like a half day type early release versus a hour and a half or two hour early release. And that. Makes an awful lot of sense as far as. Busing and childcare and work. And the additional thing that was brought up by a few educators who reached out to us was that it. One of the things that I did not think about, and YouTube probably did because you're in this, these votes, is if we do a. Hour and a half or two hour. Dismissal. The actual dismissal time eats into the amount of planning time you have available. So that would mean instead of being an hour and a half or two hours, instead you're at. An hour and a half or hour. Of actual planning or media time available, and is that really useful?
Our dismissal takes fifteen minutes.
How about it?
It it takes a while.
A lot. When we have, and I know that it was different with the power outage, because they could call people down, but it took a very long time to get Will out of. So, I mean, how long does the dismissal time take at the elementary school? From when the first kid leaves to when the last kid leaves?
That is. That's a good question.
Yeah.
I think we all got those. Is anybody here opposed to doing the early release?
I'm sure I'm on board. Yeah.
I do have a question. What what is the impact on high school? Because my only question is if you have a Wednesday afternoon class, you no longer have that class, and what do we do with that?
No, that is not the way it works. On early release, early, regular early release schedules, they do a, they see all their classes for sure.
Okay, I just, that was mine, I, cause I know what a nightmare scheduling is.
Middle school's gonna do the same thing.
And I just thought about, you know, I know that that, but sometimes classes only need certain days.
Yeah.
Certain times. And so they do whatever the other day's schedule, and that's probably, I just don't wanna eradicate. And I know that they might also do it on semester, maybe just don't fill that whole next semester or whatever, but I just thought that my big question was scheduling.
Other players.
I just was gonna ask, I just wanna make sure, is this for district wide, too, that was a bit distinguished?
As opposed to just one school?
Or two schools?
Okay.
I don't know.
What would, wanted to clarify that it would be. What would the benefit be of not doing it district wide?
Not having.
Never. I just never, I haven't heard any keeps from any high school folks, so I didn't know if they.
Uh, there would be a logistical nightmare if we don't do the prior system.
Well, just you're, you're getting some teachers extra time and not others.
It's not even that, it's gonna be a logistical nightmare in terms of possible. So.
Yeah, that's true.
We send our preschool, middle school, our middle school, high school kids all go together, so.
Yeah. That would work. I just wanted to clear.
Also, there is one problem. And I think, uh, Julie, as you've thought about this, she has, I'm sure she has, but. Uh, we have to think about, it does have some implications for pre-k. Because we have a pre-k afternoon. And I, but it's, but it's, it's dual, other, other school systems have to deal with the same issue and. Just know that we have to take that to work around.
Would the kids club be able to accommodate for an early release every week? Okay.
No.
Great.
I, do you wanna go on that? Well, I was just thinking, I know that we're, I was trying to balance. Everybody's needs. I was wondering if it would make sense to, if you, I have, oh, we, uh, calendar, excuse me, your best could just look it up for a second. I know the proposal is that this starts on January fifth. So, okay, my thought was. Would we do it on the fifth, when we're just coming back from break? The next week, there's already an early release scheduled. The week after that, it's not a full week. Would it make more sense to start on the twenty sixth, which happens to be the beginning of the third quarter?
January twenty sixth?
Yep.
Yes, and then, well, at least for the whole third quarter, and then reapply.
So you guys got kind of the same input, I I think we have, and you got some of the, I know you got some emails. I think staff would prefer that start next week.
Yeah.
My next, right after, right after, uh. Thanksgiving break. Yeah, you know what, I just realized this, so one of the things that either can be understood or whatever, but if we have. Like I looked at the January thirteenth, uh, January fourteenth, early release, I would say. Needs to be included in that, so that would not be an early release. But the early release would be twelve. And.
Think the reason for the one thing of.
No, not really, really, really.
It is, because it extends the weekend.
Yes.
Oh.
Because the Monday's.
The holiday.
Right.
So we're looking back to the twelfth.
Do you really need to? It's already.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you know, um, part of what was part of the conversation last week is we got focused on the. CDC's recommendation. Uh, and this is really, this whole is is for, you guys got the results of the, uh, the staff survey. I I I could tell you the thing I've heard most consistently over the last week is, I'm gonna do this, why, why are we waiting till January? Right now?
Well, I I think that was because of giving the notice to the parents. That was the whole reason why we said January.
Well, I could give it two weeks. Yeah.
Is that enough for people who don't have the opportunity to work from home and maybe don't already have childcare lined up? To rework their work schedule, some players schedule their. Shifts two weeks or more in advance.
So it, for me, the very, I guess I was just sort of responding to. Sue's suggestion, which I understand the logic behind it, but I'm, I'm responding to what I've got from feedback. So I think if you went for the half day, um, as is being discussed, and you do it. January fifth. Or even the fifteenth of December, whatever, I think it's sort of more sooner than later. Uh, I think that's probably a decent compromise. In my mind.
We would do it on the fifth, but. Is that the day they return to school?
Today's the third.
The third day, yeah. Or do they come back on the?
They come back on the third.
Okay.
I would recommend you do it on, on the fifth, again, if you read the email that you all got last night. Typically, if that's the first time we do it. It's really, I think it's really critical if we start that, because of all the stuff that. Teacher who wrote, uh, there's two teachers that I. Sent out to you guys, they both talk about the same thing. There's, there's a. They're not gonna get an opportunity to meet and start to dig up in that. If we wait till. What we're seeing on here is. It's a five day week, well, that first week is a five day week, so.
Why don't we start? Start sometime in December?
We can, yeah, Sue's good.
Comment.
Oh, yes. Sorry, you took far away. Comment is, where are the kids going to go that parents cannot either work from home or cannot find childcare? There's already a severe shortage of childcare openings in town.
Understood, um, that's, we, I don't think the school could be, can address that, I think our best we could do is get people noticed. And they have to figure those things out, they figure it out during the summer. And I, and some, the conversation last week was different because it was based on the CDC recommendation. This is based upon the reality where our staff is now. I think we have, we have to think about that, like of the schools, I use that analogy, so. Can't answer that, I can't answer this question, maybe you guys can.
Realistically, um, how many more students could you fit in the kids club? Do you have? Staffing to fill those spaces? So they're at.
Again, that's just reason.
Right. So thirty-two of forty-nine right now. Well, we talked the other day about possibly helping to subsidize that if it's something that we cause. Right?
Yeah.
But that's not, that doesn't fix a lot, that fixes seventeen kids. Out of. Four hundred and twelve. Sue has another comment.
Oh, yeah. I have an idea instead of there. All right, but, yeah, someone that would like that.
Yes.
Hi, is it, is it me, Sue?
Hello.
Um, hi, I'm Amy Corderm, I just wanted to put in here that. I think the point about parents scheduling, most employers schedule two weeks out or so. In giving the teachers the time to start in December, I think September fifteenth would be critical. We need to do something to help them get through this time, and I think. And would really encourage the board to consider doing this in December, starting earlier, if at all possible. Thank you.
Start on the fifteenth.
December.
Of December, it would be fifteen total days that we would early release beyond what was already scheduled. From the fifteenth to the end of the school year, because we wouldn't early release on the eighth of June, since it's the day before the last day of school.
No, you would.
No, you wouldn't, because it's not a full week.
Oh, it's not a full week, so we, we started on the half day. Because it was a Wednesday, but that's just, we've been on that schedule part.
A lot.
So long now.
I like to start the summer first.
I'm really nervous about doing it for the school year. Um, last year, things really changed in the spring. I mean, I I don't think we should say we're not going to do it, but I I like that we did it.
So would we say for the winter?
Or pick a date, or what, to March, I don't, whatever, but just. Things really changed, and we don't know what's gonna happen, if there's more increased full testing, if there's.
Well, vaccinations.
The vaccinations, what that's gonna do, uh, there are some other things that I'd like to talk about that might. Be helpful to the teachers too, to take some load off them. I just like that check in.
I I feel like we should be able to revisit it, obviously, but. If if you were needed to make a cut date, I would say at least through April vacation. Beyond, but I I would like to say it to the end of the year.
Yeah, I think it is.
Sue's got a question. Sue doesn't have a question.
I don't, but, um, I've been asked to re, you asked for confirm that the half day was a, something for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty two school year. And not extend for the next school year, and something to be doing forever.
I understand.
I don't think you can, I don't think we can confirm that, I think we are looking at it this year. And it would be revisited definitely for next year, it's not carved in stone, but if it's also working, then.
I think the concern is, remember, what, four years ago, maybe, maybe longer now? We did that study for the, yeah, and, um, there was some, it sounds like pretty serious pushback. On that for, in the community.
Or late starts.
Yeah. I think that there are a number of people who are just concerned that we're gonna start this and say, that's it, we did it, it worked, we're not gonna change it. Just continue to do that and have that be a decision that we make without involving the whole community.
I don't think the, it's a good idea to. It's a decision you have to make to rebuild the calendar, I don't think you want to decide tonight. But of the future, you're, you're dealing with the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, I would just limit your thinking to that, I don't think you can promise. Or not promise.
Right.
Just make a decision based upon now. I think it's not a bad idea to take it to, by, under advisement, some of the, uh. Concerns, and I think that. Friends of all of you, I think you did that last week, uh, making that decision, because I think we're trying to look at that, I think. At some point, if this school video considers doing that in the future, at the appropriate time, which is not now, um, we're gonna have to get a lot more information.
One of the things that, um, I thought about, a friend of mine who's a teacher reminded me. One of the things that, um, I thought about, a friend of mine who's a teacher reminded me, uh, was, this program, I don't know if y'all are familiar with that, it's through the Department of Education. It is created by teachers, and actually, the DOE just sent us a newsletter recommending this as a possible option for those who have to be out for quarantine, or, um, whatever, maybe remote, whatever. Um, they are K through 12 unit studies that are developed by teachers. They are made to be, um, self-directed. They're on the computer. You can print them off if you want, but you don't have to. I asked that question. Tip Show, I wish she could be here tonight. She's one of our teachers that has been involved with this. I didn't know if that was something that could be, that the teachers could do, so if somebody has to be out on quarantine, you don't have to revisit the wheel. You just either say, here it is, it's free, you just get on it and go for it, or assign them if you want, or would that be helpful to teachers? So they're not having to make, read new plans for kids to look out.
I got off, why do you say that? Because I wonder if it's the same teacher.
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
I got on a module today, and I was lost. So even if it is something that's supposed to be used in frontline, you still need the time to understand it. And it's not something I could necessarily just give a kid right now and say, do this. And I, I'll get one module to be there.
Yeah.
But, so yeah, yeah, it might be something you could do, just like you get off teacher, like teachers, and cut off a unit and give it to kids too. But you still need time to figure that out, and yeah, so.
And, and that's a different conversation than what the release, when to start or how long.
I know, I just, I just wanted to throw it out there, because I feel that's a big part of the stress.
Yeah. I know that Main Public also has a really good resource for teachers, Main Public Radio Broadcasting. That I don't know if, if our teachers are aware of or are taking advantage of. So it might be good to share those resources that you learned with Jim, and you can.
Yeah.
No, that's not new. Moose has been around for almost two and a half years.
I don't mean new, it's new to me. Of course, I'm not a teacher. Um, but it might be useful to, to just.
The other, the other thing is, I asked, I was asking Tip a couple of questions, but I wasn't sure, I didn't go into them, but I just went on and I thought, well, if you have to have a tutorial, if that could be helpful. She said, no, we don't, we kind of, if you want. She was very willing to give, uh, a tutorial on that, or explain them, or whatever, that.
I just want to throw that out there, because that's, that could help.
That'd be a great use for a response.
Let's take that short hand to a motion as to when to start this program. If some people here that want to start on December 1st, if some people here that want to start, yeah, if some people here that want to start on the 11th.
I don't.
But the point is, Jim, do you want to make?
First.
December 1st?
I'm gonna ask for the process of discussion on the second motion.
Well, it's the, the, the sort of discussion. We're gonna massage the, uh,
The discussion.
Motion.
I, I think the first is.
I would just also, before you go any further, but it's almost nine o'clock, so you all know that.
Oh, we need to.
We used to be. Well, you need, you can, it is a process.
Yeah. Do you want to do that first?
Yeah, I don't.
Well, generally speaking, uh, as I understand the rule, you, the, uh, you can continue with the discussion. You're on past nine o'clock. In order to go on to the other, because we need to make that motion.
Okay, you have something after this.
We do. We have people who've been waiting.
Okay, so I want to take a motion to go past nine o'clock.
So both, someone, the second.
Seconded? A vote in favor?
Only just called Okafor.
Pass it unanimously.
Um, I think. Dark date, um, I think the first of December is too early. I would feel more comfortable with the 15th of December.
Splitting the difference instead of going with the 8th? Is that still a little too soon for, I, I'm just.
I'm, I'm worried about people finding.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, a way to take.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't think, I think it's. I don't think something's gonna actually happen.
What if they can't find it?
They'll be able to figure something out.
He's, he's just, he's lost. Um, I agree that, uh, there is no big difference between two or three weeks for finding childcare. I think for people who don't have childcare right now, I'm sure this discussion is panic inducing. And I think giving that extra week is useful, even though there essentially isn't a big difference. There will be some people who will be frozen in panic and not ready to start that. And maybe that extra week at the beginning of it will make a difference with them. Jim, there is a website run by the Department of Public Services that I'll email to you. It's called Childcare Choices, and it lists all of the licensed childcare providers across the state. It can be filtered down by town, by street, by whatever, so we can share that with parents if they need to find childcare. Um, and they're not sure where to start that process.
Awesome. Good benefit of discussion. I came tonight fully prepared. Although I'm always concerned about destruction, to vote, starting the release days in January. As we had had some discussion, uh, maybe last Tuesday, whatever it was. My point, yeah, my point is that I, I, I think we do need the other release days. I'm gonna stay with January a bit. I, I think struggle gets even worse if you are in a situation of finding childcare during the Christmas season, and all the other things.
I agree.
January?
Yeah. I agree with you.
No, go.
No, no, go.
I know, I think I'm trying to skip out on.
No, no, no.
Sorry.
That was a problem. I'm gonna be.
Sophie, you can catch up with this one tomorrow.
We've thrown all the questions to you.
I guess too, I guess because we had said it a couple of different times, that it was gonna be on the 5th. And we, instead of going with the two hours, it's a lot.
Seven weeks.
But several of those are.
Seven weeks, but with holidays.
Yeah.
But those are hopefully non-planning holidays for the teachers.
They're still a non-staying holiday for teachers.
But with a lot.
Yeah.
Just to go.
I'm making you a straw vote until you get ready to make the motion. Pick one, pick a time. Those who.
Anytime.
Let's support the 5th. So we're gonna give two of you.
I, I don't, I don't have preference. I will go whatever the majority decides. I, I think there's a really great argument for those days.
Okay, so let's go the other extreme. How about wants to go on the 1st?
Of December?
Of December. Okay, um, go with the middle ground, so 15.
15, I think.
I could do the 15th much more comfortably than the 1st.
So three of you can do that.
15, 21. I'll, I'll, we'll be nominating my 4th. I'll just give up.
So I can amend the motion to the 15th?
I have it written, if you want to see it.
You gotta move this thing. I am gonna volunteer everyone.
To.
It would just be just.
She needs to amend it, she's on it.
Oh.
Yeah.
Uh, so the amendment would be to start early releases every Wednesday. Uh, on a full week of school starting for the 2021, 22 school year, starting 12:15 until June 1st.
Yes, ma'am. However, we'll be understanding. From the discussion.
Oh, we can revisit this, absolutely.
Second, the amended motion.
I'm gonna need that.
And when do we need to stipulate?
No, I think we can revisit it anytime.
We revisit this.
The protocol, yeah.
Are you going to advocate it? Any more discussion? A vote in favor? I'm sorry.
That's all.
I'm gonna now.
I want to see 41 votes.
I'll go with the January 1st.
Okay.
So we'll pass the 41st. Okay, new business. To, okay, we're going in, to make the YMCA's Kids Club program under legal public school jurisdiction, thus permitting home-tested kids to be treated as.
So moved.
Second.
I read Lonnie's proposal, and I am fine with that.
So, I, I would be remiss if I didn't say that I revisit this with the CDC. They, they are not in favor of calling it a, they understand our situation. They were not real pushy, but they've been great to work with, so they're not gonna, whatever. They're not gonna trace, age, hackers, but they just said they can't support it as a school program, and, um, you know, but I told them.
They say why?
Yeah, because they, they can't, they can't separate that from any other business. From their perspective, why programs and things like that. Well, the biggest issue for us, this is, this is the biggest obstacle to that, why, but Bonnie, we did his thing is, in the building, kids are masked just, they, you know, they draw stuff. When they're outside, they are, um, they're mixed cohorts. And that's, you know, they're gonna, they recommended after our conversation to, uh, to have them be masked at recess, and then they want time out, if they want to have a mask break, they could, they could sit. But still, as Julie pointed out a couple of times, it's, no matter how you look at it, it's mixing cohorts, and that's the, that's the big, they, as I said before, this is actually what sort of swayed in this direction initially was, uh, that, uh, you know, it's no different, we just said this long conversation about basketball programs, you know, all these things we're looking to do. And that's what the lady said at the end of our conversation. She said, so what if it was a school program with mixed groups? And she said, well, it'd be no different than the basketball programs, or anything. So you just made a case for, for this happening, so. I just, I'm not, I'm not saying one way or another. You know, I think when I, I put information out there, which is my responsibility is to present, I think that's what I'm advocating for. I'm not advocating for that. Um, and, uh, but it's, but, you know, I have to do my, my due diligence as a superintendent of schools to say that it's not following, uh, the CDC guidelines.
So because they're not, because they're mixing cohorts outside, that's what we're not following?
It's cohort inside too.
They're masked inside.
They're gonna be masked outside too.
I'm just, I'm just. I'm, yeah, I know, but I'm just trying to think of our school and, and what we do. I don't feel like we're cohorting. It's like, we're, like, it's not as much of a cohort issue anymore.
So for instance, if we, we go to lunch, we go with all first grades, all second grades, all third grades, they're not mixed up. They go to recess, it's all first grades, all second grades, all third grades.
Oh, okay.
We don't, we don't mix the.
See, we are that, then we do a mixed three-way levels at a time.
We don't.
Lonnie, in his, right up and again just now, did say that they separated the cohorts in their planning inside.
I don't, yeah, I'm not saying, don't, I'm not saying beat this, yeah, I, I figured out what we beat it to up last week. I just, I, I feel like I have a responsibility to tell you that, I went back and revisited, um, I, I'd had a number of conversations with many people from the DOE and the outbreak team since last Tuesday's meeting. And I just said, and I just, you know, the real thing is, so what if they choose to do this? I checked with, with Melissa, we had a conversation, um, today, it's, you know. So I think I've done everything I can do in terms of just saying what the situation is. I can tell you, it's, try to be, you know, people think of advocating one side or the other. It has the potential for being, for having fewer kids in quarantine, and potentially less work for, uh, for Melissa, potentially. I, I can't have to say that, but potential.
I think, given that this board just voted to allow basketball players to breathe heavily in each other's faces without a mask on.
I didn't hear that.
I can't imagine that allowing these students to be masked is worse. I understand that the CDC is saying, we don't have the capacity to come in and evaluate your kids' club to make sure that they're doing the right thing. And that that's why they're saying, we don't think this is a good idea. That's different from them saying, this isn't a good idea. They're saying, we don't have the capacity to come and see if this is a good idea.
So I'm gonna say again, that I want to be really crystal clear with you guys, with, with people who want to use, uh, whatever, if, whatever, I, if you're asking me to unilaterally make the decision, I would decide to do it. I, I, I had the conversation, I have a responsibility to share all the information with all of you, and you make up your own mind. Let's watch this.
Melissa? So I think they're doing great. I mean, they, there are very forthcoming things that come to see what we're doing right. I think when I made this meeting, unfortunately, I had revisited the last three days, so I have not made my way out yet, 3:30. But I, I've said this part to Jim, and I've said it to them as well, like, let's just continue if, if it looks like it's not working, right? How about our first piece, and it's really not working? Let's revisit, revisit, have a team meeting, have, you know, I think we're trying to collaborate and make it work. And I'm, I'm willing to do that to help our community, because we had very upset parents tonight, and I know that, and we feel that. And obviously, the half-day is on Wednesday, so that's going to increase the number, I'm sure. Um, but I think, I think we just talk about it, and if it doesn't work, then we just figure it, you know, have another conversation. But I'm willing to just try it at least, um, you know, for our community's sake. And they're obviously easy guys to work with, and if it's not working out, then we just figure something else out. But I mean, I, it is, it's one, it's school sponsored, so a close contact is gonna be just like what Julie and I do. When I text Jim, hey, you have a positive, we know there are kids above, then we now have this conversation, probably on a Friday night, or Saturday, because that's how it rolls around here. Um, and, and then we just figure it out. Hopefully, the contacts are less, right? And there are more participants in public testing, so they still have to quarantine, but they still leave for the school, they go to school after school care. I mean, you know, and if we start seeing transmission, like we already had before, but they didn't have a strict protocol, so hopefully, you know, it, I, I think it's just, I think we, we say yes, and then if we have to backtrack and backfill and revisit it, I think I'm, that's, I, that's how I would.
I like that. I would suggest we, we roll it into return to school protocol, the revisit, every meeting. Is it still working well? Yep, good, we keep going. If it's not, we make changes.
I agree.
I just need to ask, ask my question to Lonnie and the.
Yeah.
Are the students good on? Are the students gonna all be required to come into kids club to participate in the testing?
Full testing?
Full testing.
Why? We have, we have strongly suggested, the email that I sent, protocols, so we strongly suggest we should just stay in full testing and then drop me back.
I think that honestly, if, if we do this, I think that would encourage people to do the pre-testing, because then there would be a reason if there would be a.
We say.
For them.
We say.
Yeah. Any other questions in this question? Are you raising your hand, Melissa?
I was just looking at, majority of the list that we had just already put in quarantine, many, quite a few, and I don't know, like a handful, have already said, hey, can I send up for full testing?
Good.
So we just wanna make that known. There are quite, there were already quite a few full testers, I think we talked about nine or something. It's increased probably fifteen. And there are, I see the list. Some of them are vaccinated too, or I don't know. It's promising.
Yeah, it's. Anything from? Are we ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor? Passage begins.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience.
Yep.
By the comments. Anybody?
Not finished.
Or on chat, no? Really? All right, and we'll answer the community comments. Jana?
Simple quick. I appreciate all the emails from staff and parents. Mostly staff, I'm sorry, supporting your meeting last week. And just know that we are listening and we're trying our best and we know that you are all doing your best and we appreciate it. Thank you. Good luck to the football team that plays Friday at six, not seven in Aguar, at Cameron Stadium.
Seriously?
Yeah.
Just call me.
Not seven.
Why would I need to?
Uh, yeah, Joel phoned and I'll be in the meeting last night, put it on Facebook, so I was lying. Um, and, uh, good luck to them. Obviously, they're playing state games. And it should be televised, I hope too, so if you can't make it, tune in. And then congratulations to the National Honors Society and back these. But it's nice to see their name up on the marquee outside the high school when I drive by too.
Um, I don't believe these are televised. I know it's on radio, but I didn't, I saw.
Oh.
I might be wrong.
And I don't, I, I just assumed it might be too like, and not by Jess, but I don't know that. And I don't even know.
Let's go to the field again.
Uh, Cameron Stadium.
Behind the hockey rink.
And that was it. And that's it.
Today.
Your first thing, uh, like to praise Katie Boyle, the back teacher at the middle school, doing a great job. That's what I, that's what I seen, just communicating parents, just being on top of this, so I'm gonna praise her. And publicly thank Melissa, or you know what?
She knows. She knows.
Kelly? Um, I don't really have a lot to say. I know, it's full on characters there. We've thrown a lot at this community this, the past two weeks, I think. We're a resilient community and hopefully that will be a good thing. I am concerned about childcare for people. I am really concerned about that. I did email that website to you and hopefully you can disseminate that to families. So that they can find childcare providers or, and that list is only licensed childcare providers, which only really matters if you have a funding source that requires that. If you're okay with a non-licensed provider watching your kid, that's up to you.
But, I don't interrupt your public comment, but I just wondered if, um, I'm gonna flip this back and on me, but maybe the high school, maybe you know, the student leadership group could look at maybe providing something. I don't even know if it's possible.
Do you have a babysitter's club?
We could actually definitely talk about that because we have been working on putting together, like more accessible ways to get community service for the high school. So we could, we could definitely talk about that.
This is kind of whatever. Do you need community help to clean up the down trees on the, on the?
No, I mean. We have a super incentive with the chainsaw.
Perfect.
Most of the time, people taking care of that, it's just when it gets a little boring and.
Okay.
I, I don't think I sent this to everybody, but George and I, after Tim's email, they're like, George and I have an help and scope to, uh, we put together a plan out, but it's not. I don't think it needs to be taken care of tomorrow or tonight or whenever, but I think it needs to be taken, taken care of soon.
I mean, I, I can help. What's?
Well, I think we want to, I think, I mean, not, whatever popular we're going here, really, anyway, but, you know, we, we have some new tractors.
Perfect.
One with a nice backhoe and a six-foot bucket, so.
Okay, good.
And I love to drive it.
You drive it over to my house, because I drive girls and blitzes.
Is that it for you, Kelly?
That's it for me.
Joe?
Uh, I'm just real pleased that making sincere efforts to communicate with our community and our teachers and everybody. Can't do much more than. And I won't say any more because I'm willing to report that. I'm Emma's, Emma's.
Oh.
Emma's, well, she's French.
She's nice.
I'm German.
German! Okay, but anyway, I really wanted to.
So I guess you're on, Lonnie?
Yes, so for the high school, um, we have a new WBS episode coming out tomorrow. And then you all know next week we have the tip-off tournament. And then also on Saturday, which is separate from the tip-off tournament, we have an alumni game for cancer awareness. So I think that will be really cool to attend, so I hope a lot of people can come.
It's there.
Tell me where it is.
At that, the, um, the alum, I don't know the exact times for the tip-off tourney, but the alumni game is on Saturday at eight fifteen, yeah.
Saturday after, thanks, good.
Is that just boys or boys and girls?
That's boys and girls. So that's, uh, Ms. Ms. Shumway and Mr. MacArthur put that together. And Mr. MacArthur contacted a bunch of old high school students who played, yes, former, former. Former basketball students who, uh, high school students who played basketball, so they'll be together playing. So.
Could you repeat the time?
Uh, Saturday at eight fifteen PM. Um, and then I have some updates from the middle school, which I want to thank the pilot for sharing with me so quickly. The students are learning, the middle school students are learning about the Bill of Rights and current events. They're writing, running, experimenting, creating. And I've heard there's a lot of, they spend a lot of time outside. I see them whenever I, like, leave the school during the middle of the day outside, which I think is really awesome. And also on the website, there's some pictures of Ms. McAtton's group. They're like running outside, jogging around and also picking up litter at the same time, which I think was a really amazing idea. And then I also, yesterday, got to actually go to the middle school during the day, which I also want to thank this pilot for and all of the teachers that helped me do that and welcomed me into their tutorial classes to kind of interview some students about, I wanted to talk to them about remote learning. And, um, really, I got a lot of really great feedback. I gotta say, like, I think I was more intimidated going to talk to them than they were of me, but they were all like super enthusiastic, really willing to talk to me, um, gave me a lot of, I mean, overall, like, nobody likes being remote, but I also got a lot of positive feedback about the organization and just that, uh, you know, if it has to be done for a week or two, it, it works pretty well and that really, they just want to be in contact with their teachers. But, uh, it, it works pretty well. And at the high school, between talking recently with the high schoolers and the middle schoolers, the overall is that, like, if we have to be remote for a week or two, like, we are okay with that. And we understand that it's more difficult for the grade school students, but preventative measures need to be taken, that we, for the most part, would accept that, like, rather than getting into a more dangerous situation. But, um, yeah, so that, that was kind of the overall feeling there. And I also, like, after I talked to the middle school students, I would, I would say, like, oh, is there anything else you'd like me to talk about other than remote learning? And so many of them were like, no, like, this is a really great school. So that was also really nice to hear.
Yes, Kelly. I, I remember two things I meant to talk about.
I'll yield my.
Um, I, I, I'm surprised I forgot. So at the grade school, the fifth graders are organizing a collection for three of the local animal shelters. Including some of the students colliding the animal shelters with a, you know, script and speaking to them. And Will had to leave a voicemail this afternoon, which was his first time ever doing that. It's hilarious. That was really cool. They're so energized by this project and he just wouldn't stop talking the whole way home about everything that they're planning. The other thing, earlier this year, we talked about what would happen if there was some kind of an emergency at the high school, middle school campus and vehicles couldn't get up rambling. So I took a ride, Charles.
Three.
Up Charles Street, and then I took a ride down through the middle school parking lot. And it looks to me like there's just a gate and a cone type of a situation. Who holds the keys to that gate? Do you? Or does the town or?
I think George does. Whatever. I can tell. No way, George. Uh, there's, there's another, yeah, please, pardon, that is also another access through Apple Tree crossing.
I mean, Charles Street is really narrow and I wouldn't want that to be an open.
Oh, really?
Yes.
I think you can. And other people.
Well, there's, there's no pavement to pave.
No, but my point is, if you need and if you have access, there are people that, like, you can drive to the high school and the middle school.
Okay.
The problem with Charles Street in the winter, though, is it does, it gets loud to the.
To the gate.
Gate, so that, there is no access.
Which, which is too bad, because you really do need.
Yeah.
Two accesses and the longstanding thing has been that, uh, we made the deal with Charles Street, you know, those residents that we would not use that as the entrance into the school area, but I didn't make that, but I'm just telling you that, that to me is a big mistake. We've even talked about it, it's, uh, years ago, for Jim's year, and about all of you. We talked seriously about forcing the issue because we wanted to make sure that the fire department could get up to that middle school as quickly as possible. Plus, the curve up there is not conducive to some of those fire trucks.
I, I think.
Still gotta do that.
Making that decision probably was smart. It is so narrow. Even just having my car just going up and down, I'm thinking about having another car made me a little nervous.
Oh, sure.
Yeah. Once you go up around that.
Pretty wide, pretty wide until you get to the gate.
But once you get to that straightaway to the gate, it's narrow.
Uh, we could have.
All right, I'm definitely yielding my.
Sorry.
Last week, I'll go home.
Sorry, sorry. Thank you.
So I don't think I have any objection if I want to, the general skating at nine twenty-seven. Thank you, everybody.